Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 5:40 PM. May I please have a roll call?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Tynan Sorga.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll ask everyone to please rise for an invocation by Pastor Chuck Brandon of Gateway Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I invite everybody to join me in a spirit of prayer for wisdom and guidance from God tonight. Dear Father God, we thank you so much for loving us. Help each of us and all of us to love you with all of our heart, soul, mind, and strength. Lord, we love our city. We love our people. We pray your blessing and strength and wisdom for the men, the women, the teens, and the kids who live in our city. We pray that we can be strong in every way possible, particularly in our relationship with you. Lord, help us to remember, all of us, blessed is the nation, or blessed is the city, blessed is the neighborhood, and blessed is the city government, whose God is the Lord. Father, we thank you for our mayor and our commissioners. We pray your blessing on their lives at home and at their work and in their personal life as well. Give them guidance for the days ahead. Thank you for their service to help our city. And Lord, we pray for Boynton Beach. It's an important place, a good place to live. And we pray that all that's done and said here tonight will help to build it, to strengthen it, to guide it in the right ways and the right manner for the right reasons at the right time to get the right results, to bless our city, to help our city. And Father, we always call upon you to the nth degree to help us, to guide us, to show us, to correct us, to lead us to the place where we can call upon you freely in deep faith and personal commitment in all that we do. And bless this meeting tonight, and everybody's here to represent their cause, what they believe in, but may it be worked upon together judiciously and wisely with the good results that need to come out of it, with any changes or redirections that are necessary to make it the best it can be. So, Lord, we love you and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next, we are moving on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, or corrections.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to add, to get an update on the amphitheater.
The Sarah Sims Amphitheater?
Sarah Sims, yes.
I'll ask staff, do we have that ability today, or should we wait till next meeting?
Gary has a couple slides and is ready to do that.
Okay, and so we're going to put that under City Manager's Report.
Yep, as item B.
Mayor?
Yes?
With the consensus of the board, I'd like to add a discussion item to future agenda items, an opportune coincidence to discuss the continuation or an end date for the hybrid model of our meetings, given the declining severity of COVID. To future agenda items for discussion.
And so you're saying the hybrid meeting? Okay, and did you want to have that next week or in two weeks or in December?
Yeah, the next meeting, I don't have too much to say on it, but I think.
And you're not asking staff for any backup or costs?
No, the nature would be to decide the continuation and a timeline to kind of divest and try to return to normal format.
And if there's nothing else, may I have a motion to approve as amended?
Oh, move.
Second. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission, Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose at this time. I apologize for my absence at the last meeting. I was out of town camping on vacation.
All right. And next, we have Commissioner Romulus.
Yes, Mayor, good afternoon, everyone. Hope everybody had a happy Halloween. I had an opportunity to attend Pirates Fest with my family, and we were the Power Rangers. So, had a blast doing that. I get to live vicariously through my kids when it comes to Halloween. We all get dressed up, we all go to the nines for it, so it's a blast. So, great job and kudos to our CRA staff, but also our city, our first responders and everybody else who participated and really made that event a hit. I think I just heard so many people just talking about how fantastic they felt that it was to be in downtown Boynton and to see human faces and to just interact. So, I'm excited to just see more of that and seeing our downtown really being fully utilized and opened up in this way. So, the only disclosure that I have is that I want to say that I did meet with Brian Fitzpatrick in regards to his property here.
Commissioner Penzerga?
I have no disclosures at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No disclosures, but just some observations. On 10/21 and 28th, I worked with the Feeding South Florida at the Eze Hester Center. And again, just to echo the Pirate Fest that was held this past Saturday and Sunday was just outstanding, because very huge crowd, the well organized, you know, so hats off to everyone involved, CRA, Police Department, Fire, the city, job well done. On this election day, I pray that the right candidates will be elected. It's going on right now. Also, I understand that yesterday was the first day of American Indian Heritage Month, something new to me as I found out in my reading, so we want to, and keeping with our pride, as we have it month, as we have it here in the city, we want to acknowledge the American Indian Heritage Month. Also, don't forget that I believe it's Sunday night, we fall back by one hour. Make sure you set your clocks and don't be an hour late. And lastly, I guess this is something I have to, I hope that doesn't happen. I had to park out front a few minutes ago because there were no parking spaces in our little area. So, I just want to make sure that the officers kind of protect me and make sure that my car is not towed, okay? So, but we may need to go back to what we used to do before of identifying at least five spots for the commissions.
Thank you. As for myself, on October 21st, I attended the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency's meeting. And that afternoon, I attended the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force. On the 23rd, I attended the Boca Chambers Rockabilly Gala. On the 25th, I attended, I had a meeting with Sarah Martin of Epic Events and Michael Weiner. In addition, I was there for the ribbon cutting for 20 years at the Schoolhouse Children's Museum. I was able to be there with my daughter earlier last month and very excited for the new toddler co and play area that they have. I thought it was very well done and excited for another 20 years here in Boynton Beach. And in that evening, was, I was at a meeting for the Wastewater Treatment Board. October 26th and 27th, I attended the Florida Public Transportation Association and the Commission for Transportation Disadvantage Conference up in Daytona Beach. Part of the sessions that I attended was the Future of Transportation, Suicide Transit, and I was actually nominated for Elected Official of the Year for the State of Florida. And speaking of the suicide, I know that Bright Line is running, Lori. If we could get, I guess, Bright Line to give us some more information so that we can promote that in our city, because I remember the last time they started their trains again, we had some incidences, and so I just want to make sure the public knows that the Bright Line is running on a regular basis. On October 28th, I went to Crosspoint for Reed for the Record and attended the Palm Trans Service Board, and, you know, they are, the county is starting to promote their 561 Plan, and I don't know if we have gotten any of that information out to our residents.
No, I think the extent of what I've heard of it was presented at a City Manager's Luncheon, so I can maybe touch base with Nick and see.
Yeah, if you could give us a timeline so that if any of our residents want to add comments to the county's decision, that they have that information.
Okay, I'll reach out to Mr. Uren and find out.
And that evening, I attended the ribbon cutting for Shaping Changes, a new business here in the City of Boynton Beach on Congress. And then on October 30th, I also attended a pirate wearing my pirate outfit. And at the conference that I went to, there was a costume contest, and I did get third place wearing that same outfit, so.
Just winning all types of awards, huh?
I know. It was, you know, it reminded me of that Monopoly game thing where you got second place in a beauty prize, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yes. And I think that is it for the informational items by members of the City Commission. Is there anything else before we move forward to announcements? All right, we have a double announcement by Gabriel Favetta, I hope I pronounce her name right, events manager regarding the First Friday at 5 concert on November 5th, 2021.
Good afternoon. My name's Gabrielle Favita. I'm the new events manager for the City of Boynton, and I am here to announce the First Friday at 5 Concert Series that will take place November 5th, this upcoming Friday at 5:00 PM at Centennial Park and Amphitheater. We will have the Shane Duncan Band performing. They are a southern rock and country band based out of South Florida. We will also have a local line dancing instructor come to teach a quick line dancing class. His name is DJ Nacho. We'll have a couple food trucks, Peanut Plug and More is one of them, as well as Troy's Barbecue, Los Mexicanos, and Crunchy Churros. We're going to have some children's art activities and yard games for all ages. This is a family-friendly free event, and it ends at 8:00 PM. We're asking the public to bring their own chairs and blankets, and then we'll also have free parking, including ADA parking behind the Arts and Cultural Center, as well as the Children's Schoolhouse Museum area. Just a reminder, Southeast First Avenue between Seacrest Boulevard and Southeast First Street will be closing at 3:00 PM for food truck placement.
All right, thank you very much and welcome. And so I kind of had a, so you will be coordinating all the future events?
Yeah, I'm working with marketing and events.
Okay, so very excited. And the other thing that, you know, I was always trying to get is the third and fourth floor, there is those patios. Is, are you aware of ways for people to reserve those locations?
I can defer that to Eleanor, she might know a little bit more about that.
I'll wait and to speak with Eleanor later to get that answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor? I have a question. When do we do the movies?
The movies are the third Friday of every month, so this upcoming movie is going to be on November 19th at 5:00 PM, and it's going to be Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone, and that's also at Centennial Park and Amphitheater. We do have food trucks for that event. It's going to be tacos, Veracruz, Juju's, Feel Good Foods, and Boardwalk Ice Cream so far. And then we're going to have some kids' activities, and then we also are inviting the public to wear the harp, their Harry Potter garb and join in a costume contest.
Oh, nice, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I mean, it's not really for her, but I guess just in general to say it's strange that we're starting the movie so early at 5:00 PM, as that's probably where most people are getting off of work, so perhaps considering for the future, we might start at 6:00 instead of 5:00, just a thought.
Well, I think the event starts at 5:00, the movie isn't going to start until later. So, what time is the movie time?
6 o'clock. What we'd like to do is the people that are downtown, be able to stay downtown and eat and have opportunities. So, when we had our last movie, we gauged attendance, and there was quite a lot between that first hour. So, we have many activities for the kids and adults.
Okay, I like that, thank you.
Our next announcement is by Crystal Spears regarding Community Outreach Director for Habitat for Humanity of South Palm Beach County regarding Veterans Build Event on November 5th, 2021.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Crystal Spears, Habitat for Humanity. On November 5th, we will have our annual Veterans Build Event here in the heart of Boynton Beach, where we have worked with the city in many different ways with Lori and David Scott to get the conversations going, that we have identified 10 homes where we will paint and landscape the homes in one day with volunteers, many of them will be veterans, six of the family members are veterans as well. I wanted to say a special thank you to Mayor Grant for introducing me to his Veteran Task Force group, Vice Mayor Hay that will be speaking on behalf of the city and also passing out the challenge coins to veterans. Parks and Recs Department, Casey and Gertie at the Parks and Recs Department have been amazing to work with, also the Boynton Beach PD. We walk the community with the community cops and residents to identify the homes. They'll also be participating in painting and landscaping on the homes as well. They will also be doing the security for us to look over the staging. I want to give a special shout out to Community Standards, Gala Hill and Patrick Hart, they've been amazing, they've been our go-to people, they've walked the community with us, identified the homes with us, and worked a lot with us on the logistics of everything as well. The city's also going to have a house where I think you guys are up to about 40 employees that will come out and participate. I believe that everybody here has gotten an invite, hopefully you guys can come to the ceremony luncheon that'll be at the Carolyn Sem Center. Once again, thank you for all the support, we can't do the work that we do without the city, so thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Crystal, I think I mistakenly declined it, so will you resend it to me, because I hit the right, right? It's like, oops.
And next, we have a citation recognizing, I believe Dr. Dwight Reynolds is here, and Centers for Health Promotion LLC for their partnership in the vaccination events hosted by the city of, on September 18th and October 16th, 2021. City of Boynton Beach Citation, whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the disease has led to millions of cases throughout the world, the City of Boynton wishes to thank two organizations who have partnered with the city to provide information to residents and opportunity for the community to get vaccinated against this disease. Whereas, Pathways to Prosperity facilitate a partnership with the Centers for Health Promotion LLC and the city to host a vaccination event and provide education of the community regarding COVID-19. And whereas, Community for Health Promotion runs a COVID-19 Strike Force that conducts free vaccination events in communities with low vaccination rates. The program is led by Dr. Dwight Reynolds, MD, from Coral Springs, Florida. Dr. Reynolds' team travels throughout the country providing education vaccinations. And whereas, on Saturday, September 18th, 2021, the vaccination event took place from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM in the Hester Center Gymnasium. And whereas, a following-up vaccine event was held on Saturday, October 16th, 2021 at the Hester Center. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, recognize Centers for Health Promotion LLC with this citation and declare November 2nd, 2021, as Centers for Health Promotion LLC and Pathways to Prosperity Day.
Dr. Reynolds and his wife Christine have arrived, they were running a little late.
Hello, oh, thank you, everybody. My name is Dwight Reynolds, medical doctor. It was a privilege, really, and I really want to thank the mayor, Mayor Grant, the city commissioners, and of course Lori, city manager. We had just come back from Athens, Greece, like right around the 12th of October to do the follow-up event here. Let me tell you, I'm always impressed with the people, especially with the people that helped us put on these events, the police department, fire department, and the volunteers were just absolutely spectacular. I would do this event over and over again. I don't seek recognition or pay, that's why I do, I'm a doc. I just like to simply bring the care to people where they are. We do not reach the, how can we say it, the hesitant patients, like confronting them, we meet them, greeting them, and having a discussion. And with doing that, we've been able to convert a large number of people to get their vaccines. So, now that we have the children that's getting theirs now, I think it was approved today earlier, for 5 and up, we're more than happy to come back to Boynton Beach, no charge, Mayor, to get the job done, more like getting the job done and getting families involved in it too. I have nothing else to say. Again, I want to thank you all. I want to thank my incredible team of COVID Strike Force team, my wife, incredible wife of 32 years plus, for sticking with me. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Well, before you go, I know that we have, I believe, a lot of gift cards left, is that correct? So, yeah, we do need to have another vaccine event.
Oh, good, great.
So, we'll definitely be in touch and see what we can do. I know that, I don't think we can give it to individuals under the age of 18, however.
The vaccine or the gift card?
The gift cards.
Oh, we did, we gave it to the children and the families.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's, it gets to the point where, hopefully, you know, we will get a lot more people getting vaccinated who haven't yet come to the city.
Love to do that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Reynolds, I'd just like to say to you that job well done. I have heard nothing but good comments about the whole operation and how you guys treated our citizens, and it was just a smooth operation. And again, I like to highlight the fact that we had three of our PD department leading the way, they were the first ones in line.
I recall.
We are definitely going in the right direction, and thank you for all your guidance.
Sure, appreciate it.
Our next citation is recognizing Pathways to Prosperity for their partnership in the vaccination event hosted by the city on September 18th and October 16th, 2021. City of Boynton Beach Citation, whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the disease has led to millions of cases throughout the world, the City of Boynton Beach wishes to thank two organizations who have partnered with the city to provide information to residents and opportunity for the community to get vaccinated against this disease. Whereas, Pathways to Prosperity, P2P facilitated partnership with the Centers for Health Promotion and the City of Boynton Beach to host a vaccination event and provide education to the community regarding COVID-19. And whereas, on September, Saturday, September 18th, 2021, the vaccination event took place from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM in the Hester Center Gymnasium, city staff and P2P developed a marketing plan to notify the community of the event. And whereas, a follow-up vaccine event was held on Saturday, October 16th, 2021 in the Hester Center, and whereas, P2P provided marketing and staff support for the event. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, recognize Pathways to Prosperity with this citation and declare November 2nd, 2021, as Centers for Health Promotion LLC and Pathways to Prosperity Day. I believe we have representative from P2P virtually?
Virtually, sir.
So, Ms. Bush?
Ah, there you are. Good evening, Mayor Grant, Lori Laverde, City Commission, and to everyone, all of you in your respective places, I am both pleased and humbled to accept this citation of very special things, go to Dr. Reynolds and Chris Reynolds and the entire strike team, and to my entire staff of Pathways to Prosperity, our volunteer nurse, Janine Towns. I mean, it was a great event. The event was an example of what we can collectively accomplish when we put our community first. I am so grateful for the opportunity to work, to have worked with the city recreation department, police and fire, administration, finance, it was just a wonderful event for all of us to come together on behalf of our community. And I absolutely look forward to other opportunities for us to work together for the residents of Boynton Beach. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes?
Did we overlook C-5, 3C for Casey Young?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm sorry, I jumped to the citations. So, our next is Veterans Day Ceremony Announcement by Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Department Director, is scheduled for Thursday, November 11th, 2021 at Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, Lori. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director, I'm here tonight to announce the city along with the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force is hosting a Veterans Day Ceremony at Tom Kaiser Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park, 411 North Federal Highway on Thursday, November 11th, starting at 10:00 AM. The event will honor veterans that have served in all branches of the armed forces. Also during the event, special recognition is scheduled to honor the 100th year anniversary of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at a monument in the park that honors this memorial site. For more information, contact the Recreation and Parks Department at (561) 742-6650, or visit the city's website at boynton-beach.org. Thank you.
So, I do have some questions, because you said 10:00 AM, and it says 12:00 PM on the agenda.
Yes.
So, I'm going to ask that we do the, a recall and let everyone know that it's at 10:00 AM, because I believe the newsletter also said that it was at 12:00 PM.
Yes, unfortunately, originally it was scheduled at 12:00, and then due to certain circumstances, it was changed to 10:00 AM.
Right, I believe that it's normally at the 10:00 AM, because it's over by the 11th hour on, at the 11th minute, the, of what we have done in the past. And so that's, you know, we were at the, I was at the Veterans Task Force, and so I just want to, I know that we lost Wayne Carols, but I just want to make sure that we do have a representative from the city at these different, at the Veterans Task Force, so that we make sure that we get it right the first time. So, Eleanor, if you could update the newsletter, I would appreciate that, thank you. And I do believe I spoke with someone from the recruiting at the, at the Florida Army National Guard, and that we will have a Humvee there and some other information for people that are looking to join the armed forces. Thank you so much, Casey. All right, our next is a proclamation recognizing the month of All right. Our next is a proclamation recognizing the month of November as Family Court Awareness Month. Lisa Brown Vannick of Families Against Court Travesties and Tina Swithen of One Moms Battle will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation, whereas the mission at One Moms Battle and the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on the importance of family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission at the FCA MC is to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system. And whereas the mission at the FCA MC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on the empirical data and research that is currently available. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. This research includes the Adverse Childhood Experience Study, the Sander Study from the U.S. Department of Justice, the Meyer Study, the Child Custody Outcomes in Cases Involving Abuse Allegations, and the Santa Clara Law Study, Confronting the Challenge of High Conflict Personality in Family Court. And whereas the mission at the FCA MC is fueled by the desire for awareness and challenge and change in the family court system while honoring the hundred-plus children in the United States who have been murdered by a parent after custody court rejected the other parent's plea for protection. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant, mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand twenty-one as Family Court Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor Grant, Commissioner Romulus, and all the familiar faces. I used to be on your Wrecking Park Board a few years back. As mentioned, Family Court Awareness Month is an opportunity for survivors of domestic violence or post-separation abuse to amplify their voices while raising awareness in their very own communities like here in Boynton Beach on the undeniable shortcomings of the family court system locally, statewide, and nationally. Right here in Florida, we have an organization that is part of this. It's called Families Against Court Travesties, FACS. It's been formed by a coalition of family court victims and activists in nineteen, in two thousand and three by the South Palm Beach County Chapter of NOW. FACS is primarily concerned that the family court system is actually harming children by treating them as property, ignoring their rights to contact both parents, denying parents' rights of due process, and in general, not considering the children's best interests. Some of us, including myself, are victims of these injustices. Some are friends, family members of victims, your neighbors, people you know who you may not know are victims as such. These organizations like FACS are seeking awareness and change in the family court system while honoring, for example, over a hundred children as of today in the United States, this year alone, who have been murdered by a parent after a custody court rejected the other parent's plea for protection right here in Fort Lauderdale. In May of two thousand twenty-one, four-year-old Granson Kessler Martin was killed by his abusive father not even twenty-four hours after his mother, Ellie Kessler, said that the boy was in danger, but she was denied a restraining order. These travesties must stop, and we are very grateful for our local cities like yourself for declaring this month as an awareness month, but we have to do more. Aside from going to the courtrooms for hearings and trials, FACS writes up evaluations of judges as they are aware of our presence as court watchers. We've been instrumental in removing family court judges from the bench. We are actively participating in the election of judges in family court. FACS has given testimony to Florida Supreme Court about fairness and diversity in the courts. FACS has staged protests against terrible judges in front of several courthouses in the appellate court and has gotten numerous news coverage. When the need and the opportunity arises, FACS acts, and we appreciate your support and your awareness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. I know this is a difficult topic. You know, I spoke to, you know, I had a session with the Center for Childhood Counseling, and an ace, you know, divorce abuse is an ace. And whatever we can do in the Boynton Beach to help promote awareness, you know, as an attorney, I'm aware that not all judges who get appointed or elected understand what it means to be a family court judge, and it seems that there needs to be additional education or experience needed for those types of judges versus civil or criminal cases. I'm so sorry that this is the reason why you are here. And please let me know, you know, outside of the meeting, what I can do to help you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Grant. I would like to mention that Tina Swithen is on the line who started the national campaign for this effort from One Moms Battle. Tina, would you like to say a few words?
Do you believe she was on here?
Oh, darn it.
I don't know if she still is.
And one last word then, if we're waiting for her. FACTS, if you know anyone who's going through any kind of family court issue, please have them contact FACS because we are court watchers, and it has statistically been shown that judges are more fair when there is a court watcher. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Tina, if you can hear us, please hit, we have the raise hand function for the attendees. But it seems that she's not here virtually. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Grant and Commissioners. How do I do that?
Say what?
Can I put my card up on the screen?
You can submit it to the clerk. I don't, there's no capacity to just project, but you can submit it for the record.
Grab one.
Our next proclamation is for the month of November as National Family Caregivers Month. Ricky Petty, Project Director for Healthier Boynton Beach will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation, whereas family caregivers greatly improve the quality of life for their loved ones, spending an average of twenty hours per week providing care, with many caring for their loved ones around the clock. And whereas over forty-three million adults and over one-point-three million youth family caregivers in the United States are the unacknowledged backbone of the nation's long-term care system by providing daily assistance to manage health and personal care, thus enabling their loved ones to stay in the home longer. And whereas family caregivers promote a culture of support, demonstrate the importance of family, and strive to value the various stages of life for loved ones. And whereas family caregivers are there as full partners in the care of their loved ones in various settings. Patients may have more than one doctor, nurses change shifts, prescriptions may be filled at different pharmacies, but family caregivers are the constant advocates and support. And whereas although family caregiving can be a rewarding experience, it often comes with consequences such as increased risk for health issues from chronic stress, less time to take care of self, fewer social relationships, reduced hours of employment, and increased demands on financial resources. And whereas family caregivers deserve to be acknowledged and appreciated for the compassionate care they provide in countless situations across our communities, it is important to recognize that many contributions of family caregivers and encourage our communities, health providers, employers, and others to support their invaluable efforts. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant by virtue of the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim November two thousand twenty-one as National Family Caregivers Month.
Good evening, Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor Hay, city commissioners, and city manager Lori. I bring greetings from healthier Boynton Beach, and I would like to say thank you. I really appreciate it, or we really appreciate it. As you know, November is National Family Caregivers' Month, and this gives us the opportunity to recognize caregivers across the country. As we know that they put in countless hours and efforts to ensure that their loved ones are safe and they have the most healthiest lifestyle that they can provide. And throughout their day-to-day, they go through a lot, and many of you may work with a caregiver or know a caregiver, or maybe a caregiver yourself. So you may sometime know some of the things that they're experiencing go through, sometimes you may not, but they really go through a lot, and the support that is needed is very, very helpful to helping them continue to, you know, their mental capacity and the things that they experience. So I ask and encourage you to during this month somehow just thank a caregiver, do something nice for them because they really, really need it, and sometimes the work that they do go unnoticed. So thank them. So again, I would like to thank the city for this proclamation, and again, thank a caregiver.
And, you know, hopefully you were there yesterday for our nonprofit ARP A funding discussion. You know, there's a lot of things that we're looking to do to help healthier Boynton Beach and our seniors, and so we look forward to partnering with you to make sure that their lives are easier in the future.
Absolutely. We hope to be a part of that. And also on November ninth, healthier Boynton Beach will be providing our annual caregivers' luncheon where we appreciate our caregivers locally here in Boynton Beach. So we're going to be at Benvenuto's. If, for more information, please contact me. You can reach me at five six one six three five eight seven eight five, or you can email me at ricky@htpbc.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if you, if the commission will indulge me, we actually have not necessarily announcement, but it is, and we'd like to announce the two thousand twenty recipient of the Tim Howard Excellence in Public Service Award. So I would want to know if I can get a motion to amend the agenda to do that now instead of waiting until later?
I'm moved.
There is no further discussion. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Pose, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. So very happy to announce this. So the, last year, the city has established an annual award at the Tim W. Howard Excellence in Public Service Award. Now honored in memory of Tim Howard, who throughout his tenure served the city in the position of Deputy Finance Director, Finance Director, and Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services until he passed away in October two thousand nineteen. Those of you who had the opportunity to work with Tim had the benefit of witnessing his expertise and unwavering commitment and dedication to providing the highest level of ethical public service for our city. In remembrance of Tim, the city is awarding one employee who exemplifies this level of excellence through the regular demonstration of competence, integrity, and professionalism in the everyday performance and service in his or her position. The establishment of this award is a reminder to all of us that it is both a calling and a privilege to serve the public, and we keep that paramount every day in the performance of our work. One such employee this year was nominated and eventually selected to receive this honor, Ms. Gail Moots. Throughout the last eight years of employment with the city, Gail has consistently answered her call to public service time and time again. She has worked her way up through the city from crew supervisor to project supervisor of public works. In doing so, she worked, works tirelessly, day in and out, to not only exceed the responsibilities of her job, but accommodate the citizens of the city of Boynton. She works on capital projects all across the city, improving parks, facilities, and such, all while building and improving relationships with staff and local businesses. She never shies away from a challenge and is definitely not one to tell you it can't be done. In the last few years, we witnessed Gail putting in countless hours towards relocating staff from the police station, customer service, and city hall, not once but twice. She coordinated the moves with mastery and skill that exemplifies professionalism and competence throughout. She not only worked with movers from sunrise to sunset, but she also was there on weekends, moving furniture herself, and delivering moving supplies and the like. Another such project that demonstrates Gail's commitment to excellence in her recent endeavor into the city's new smart sheet program. Gail took the initiative to pilot a program that has streamlined the city's capital projects. She spent numerous hours, weeknights and weekends. The process itself will not only allow the city to have better analytics, but also make more informed decisions on whether the budgeted capital projects are on schedule to meet deadlines. It is also directly communicates to each of the project managers to allow them to update their tasks for the projects. Gail also serves as a key point of contact on behalf of the city in support of the FAU Tech runway expansion into the city hall and venue innovation space. She demonstrates true leadership and is an outstanding project manager with excellent customer service and task execution. These are just a few examples of Gail's deep commitment to the public service. Her stewardship is indicative, indicative of her authentic servant leadership. We are grateful to have you on the team. Congratulations.
In addition to this award for Gail, we do have a plaque that we are placing in our lobby that will recognize each year the employee that receives this very high stellar difficult award, and Gail's name is going on it. She will also be receiving a thousand-dollar check from our donation account that is provided by Christ, by Christ Fellowship Church each year, and Gail, we couldn't do it without you, and you are amazing. Congratulations.
Got a quick question?
Yep. Oh, he went, this is kind of official.
Awesome.
Oh, good. He just had all of those fine words about me.
They're well deserved.
Yeah, more.
Yeah. But we want to put it back in the box.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have to share this. Gail texted me, she had no idea she was receiving this award, and she had texted me this morning and said, I have a quick question, and please don't think I'm crazy. I had a dream about Tim last night, and she described in great detail that he was sitting in a rocking chair, like a, like a chair rocker, I guess, like at Cracker Barrel, so to speak, and had this blanket on his lap, and he said, you know, everything's going to be okay. I'm watching over you. Very detailed dream. And she said, is November second his birthday or a significant day? And I had texted her back. I said, his birthday was September seventh. And I proceeded to notify and share that text with his husband, and he said, I told you, Tim is always working. And it was just, this is, I don't know, it's something, there's energy in the air, but Tim was there. Tim knew you were getting the award. Tim thought the absolute world of you and had tremendous respect for you, and I made sure I shared that with Roger, his husband, as well. I just had to share that with you. It's, I get goosebumps.
Thank you, everybody.
You know, from my service to the city of Boynton Beach, it started with Tim Howard as the liaison for the Financial Advisory Committee. And to see all that is accomplished where we are sitting here today was partly due to the dedication of Tim Howard. So I'm glad that we are going to have that aspect of the remembrance of Tim in the city hall for everyone to see. When I was at the Baltimore City Hall, they had something similar, and so I felt fitting that this is something that we do in the city of Boynton Beach. In addition, Gail, you know, she calls it like it is, not only here in the city of Boynton Beach, but over at our Little League Field sometimes. And so this is, I'm so happy that you. And so this is, I'm so happy that you got this award. You know, I miss seeing all of your emails, because it was not easy dealing with the construction, destruction, and moving the city of Boynton Beach after, I believe it was 50-plus years at the old city hall. And there were some treasures that she found and got to share with us. And I'm just so pleased that we are able to honor you this year, and look forward to many more things to come.
In another strange coincidence, the new Assistant City Manager, Catherine Matos, who filled Tim's position, shares his same birth date.
Okay. Now, if there's no more announcements, we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to a three-minute presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane, Arfaire City. Before I start on what I was going to say, I want to say I had the same experience with Tim, serving on that same committee prior to you. And he was a great guy. Anyway, Mr. Penziger, I don't know what I can say about you, but I'm about to. You are no better than those state governments like Texas, Georgia, and our own state of Florida, as well as six other states that have passed laws that are designed to suppress voting. You didn't have the decency to give an actual effective date in your resignation. Your ambiguous letter of resignation shows how narcissistic you really are. Because of you, and you alone, District 4 will not have an election in March of 2022. What in your mind gives you the sole right to decide how the residents of District 4 will have their commissioner chosen? Your selfish and self-serving decision is shameful. Your desire to stay in office until the very end shows how you want to be able to influence matters that may affect those special interests, developers, organizations that have or may help with your campaign, which in itself is probably a violation of the spirit of the resigned-to-run statute. You try to come across like you're all that in a bag of chips. You pontificate to have yourself sound like you care, but all you are is the tunnel at the end of the light. So instead of sitting up there like a deer caught in the headlights, maybe you can explain to everyone here why you decided to prevent an election in District 4. On March 8th, 2022, the voters of Districts 1 and 3 will go to the polls to vote for mayor and new commissioners to represent them. But because of your egregious decision, Mr. Penziger, the voters in District 4 will only be able to vote for mayor. So if you can, be transparent. And please explain to the voters of District 4 in the city your decision of when your resignation is effective and its consequences. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Sir, I know you mentioned you wanted to speak about the utility.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a comment to Commissioner Penziger. I wish you the best in your election, and I look forward to voting for you, because I know you to be a great person, a great teacher, and a great elected official. And I know that the voters, who have twice voted for you in your own district, agree. So thank you for your service.
Yes. And if I'm not mistaken, you did win your election last, was it in 2020? And you had one opponent? Is that correct?
There were.
There were opponents. Okay, well, we can see why you won.
If I may.
Yes.
Ambassador Penziger, and for the audience, there's nothing that you're doing outside the law. I just want you to know that. So just keep doing what you're doing.
I would echo all of those sentiments.
Thank you, all of you. Thank you for coming here. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sheldon Fishkin.
Go speak to the higher microphone, if that helps.
My name is Sheldon Fishkin. I live at 819 Sun Glow Street in Boynton Beach. And I recently had reason to deal with the Water Utilities Department. And the bottom line, to keep things simple, I was told at that time that it is the customer's resident's responsibility, whether they receive a bill or not, that they are responsible to pay those bills, again, whether they're notified or not. And in that particular case, I received a penalty for not paying a bill, of which they had redone my service, and I was actually expecting and waiting for the bill. And as I said, I never received it. And then when I did finally get a bill a month later, it had held an additional charge and so on. And when I spoke to them about it to complain, I was told, "This is the way to go about a concern of that nature." I feel under the current way we pay our bills using electronics and no longer using checkbooks and things that make it easy to monitor, holding elderly residents or other people who are not totally on top of the situation, and not having the utility, if they even admit that they haven't issued a bill, should not be holding the residents responsible for a lack of payment. Thank you.
This is the $10 late fee?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And your statement is stating that you didn't receive timely notice of the bill?
I didn't receive a bill. They even said that they had sent me an electronic version, and I checked my records. I didn't receive that. And then they told me, "It's my responsibility, no matter what. Even if I didn't receive a bill from them, I am responsible to make sure payment is made." And I'm just saying, that may be the rules and so on, but maybe under the current circumstances, that should be considered to be changed, especially with the elderly residents and people having difficulties keeping track of these things.
I understand. And so the city uses a third-party vendor, I believe, to send out the bills. And so that is something where, you know, we have, is that correct?
Yes. And, Mr. Fishkin, your address, did I get it right? 819 Sun Glow Street?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm going to look into it tomorrow, and we will contact you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Can't ask for more. Thank you. Have a great day. And very interesting to watch the wheels going on the government. Thanks.
Ramona Young, 101 South Federal Highway, Boynton. Last week, there was a decision with Chief Clemmons to settle her settlement, her lawsuit, $400,000, and to name a park after her. And there was no discussion by the commission in adverse of any of that, and I thought that was remarkable. However, not one person spoke about sending a written apology to Chief Clemmons. And I thought that that was very upsetting. I was listening at home, and I had raised my hand to make a comment. And I spoke with the Mayor Grant, and he said it was his fault that he didn't check. So I chastised him for that. And that was fine. But I think that every person on this commission should have something to say about this disastrous whitebush that happened to Chief Clemmons. It hurts my heart that I live in a city that would even, it would cross your mind that that would be acceptable. Now, there are many, many rumors about the city manager not taking any responsibility. I don't know anything about that. I'm just saying that I would be disappointed if there was something that she did that didn't stop this. We have enough to deal with. And for something like this to happen, I see that it is corrected now, that everyone ought to have at least a paragraph to apologize to this woman for her 20-some-odd years here. And then to be treated in the manner that she was treated is despicable. I am outraged. I am angry, and I'm hurt. The hurt comes first, then the anger. I've been out here a long time with civil rights and being an advocate for those that can't speak for themselves. But I will speak out, and I will speak out loudly, when things aren't done appropriately. And I hope that you hear me. Thank you.
Ramona, you know, the question that you're asking is, is that I did do a private apology to Chief Clemmons. You know, the question is whether we, as a commission, issue a public apology. I know the city manager issued an apology back in June of 2020. But it's something that, now that there's a finality to the lawsuit, as I mentioned, you know, when we did settle that, that that was not the end of what the city is doing. And I appreciate your comments, saying that the city needs to do more. And you are correct, the city still needs to do more.
Thank you. I appreciate your words.
And so I'll ask, the hand raise function and the ability to ask a question is available for all of our virtual attendants. And John, you'll let me know if I miss any, correct?
That is correct. As of right now, Mayor Grant, I do not see any hands raised or any questions posed in the GoToWebinar interface.
Yes.
And that option has been on for several minutes.
Very confusing the way you run this meeting. Ernest McNally, 710 Northeast 7th Street. Miss who just spoke, God bless you. Thank you. And it's not the only, and it's not isolated. There's lots of cases, with firemen, with police, racism, drug use in this town, okay? The public should really know all the details. But it takes someone like this to come up and realize that racism and bias in a city like this? And look at the amount of cases. Look what this mayor, this city lawyer, this city manager have been involved in, so many cases, and yet you don't want to talk about it. And then me, by the way, okay? Here's two complaints for state of Florida attorneys. And I asked the mayor and the city attorney for their state license number, so I could file the complaint. It says on here, "Contact them and ask for their Florida law license number." Okay? Neither one of them would provide it to me, okay? I was able to get help from another attorney, and now I have them, and I'm going to file them. And you could keep smiling all you want, because you, Mayor, you sent out a threatening email about me, right? You went out of state, you conferred with other people, and then you partnered with my neighbors, who put this threatening thing on my door. And you, Mr. No Mask, right? You think you can do what you want here. You and your city attorney and your managers, you better stop threatening people. You better stop it, okay? And I'm having trouble finding a lawyer to sue you like everybody else. And you think it's funny, Mr. Maskless? You think everything is funny.
I really?
Maskless guy. Let me ask you. Do you have a medical exemption to be in here without a mask? Look at everyone. And you walk around smiling and kissing people? What are you?
Sir, this is public comment. He?
Public comment.
Fisher Katz, he has his three minutes.
Excuse me?
Please proceed.
How do you do that, coming here with no mask? It's a question. You don't want to answer it? And you got caught, what you did with that email. You sent it all over the county and out of state, okay? Now, I'm just trying to find the right lawyer, because you're a city lawyer, and you guys are so connected, everybody's afraid to represent somebody like me, because of the power that you guys have, all the way down to Miami. It's amazing. That's why you're always smiling. That's why you think everything is funny. Threaten me, and your own police, your own police would not take this that was put on my door, threatening me. They refused to take it. And the person that I find out did it named you as responsible. Now, you could say whatever you want now. Stay away from my house and stop threatening me.
Your time is up. I'll please ask you to step down from the podium.
I don't have to step down. You mean walk away.
Mayor Grant, I do have a question about raising their hand from Mr. Ray Whitley, and I am unmuting him. Mr. Whitley? Mr. Whitley, you are also self-muted?
Okay, I got it. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
We're doing all right. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. I am Pastor Ray Whitley, and I am the Associate Pastor at Healing Hands Ministry, and I am also with New Disciples Worship Center, which is at 239 Northeast 12th Avenue. Also the spokesperson for the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy, whose address is 237 Northeast 12th Avenue. The reason for my comment tonight, and I came on specifically because I was out of town two weeks ago, and I was not able to make it to comment about the Latasha Clemmons situation. So I would love to go on the record personally, speaking as a representative of the clergy and someone who's vested in Boynton Beach. Latasha Clemmons is a hero of not only people in District 2, but Boynton Beach, period. And I agree with Mona, with Ms. Mona Young, that it was painful for everybody to be a part of that, for the community to really see that. It was very painful. I know that we've gotten to an end, and our decision has been made, but we really need to do something to honor the first black woman firefighter in Palm Beach, in Boynton Beach. She is a hero to us all, and we need to remember her as a hero. So Mayor Grant says that something will be done. How does the community be a part of what will be done to memorialize Chief Latasha Clemmons, not only as chief, but also as a hero to many, many people in the heart of Boynton and Boynton Beach, period? So I just wanted to be on the record, sharing how hurt I was going through that whole situation with her, not only as a spiritual leader, but as her friend. And what can we do to not only make her whole, but make the community whole as well? So thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ray. On our future agenda item, we do have a discussion item regarding requesting Chief Clemmons to consider naming an urban orchard after her. We have a to-be-determined, and so that will be on our future agenda until we get the correct response. If anybody would like to make other suggestions or have in contact with her, I don't know if the court case is over. So that kind of prevents us from having direct contact with her without going through her attorney. But like I said, we will, the city is not over acting and re-acting on behalf of what happened. We all are upset of that mural that was posted on Fire Station 1. And I believe I can speak for the commission, that we will do what we can to make things right.
So you are taking suggestions on what can be done in a public setting? Or is it something that we send an email on? Or how do we share, as a community, what we feel should be done to make it right, or to make the community and Chief Clemmons whole?
So I would suggest is that we are open to all options. So if you would like to, this is one of those aspects during public comments. If you'd like to send the commission individually or collectively ideas from the community, we will accept that as well. And so we want to do what's right for the community. And so please let us know your ideas.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And I'll ask again, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak? If not, John? Is there anyone?
Mayor Grant, I don't see, I don't see any hands raised or any additional questions posed at this time.
And, you know, it's, it gets to the point where sometimes we have other items kind of like on new business or legal that if you could remind me to check, to make sure that nobody has their hand raised. Whether you just send me a message that someone did raise their hand, that I can acknowledge that because sometimes virtually I do miss it. Because the webinar is not necessarily always on the, the top of my screen.
I, I've got you on this one.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further public audience, we will move now on to administrative. And appoint individual eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on advisory boards. All right, our first is, I would ask Commissioner Romulus for the Art Advisory Board. We have one applicant, Hector Velazquez.
I'd like to nominate Hector Velazquez.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have one regular position available on the Art Advisory Board. We have an affordable home building builder and a representative of employers within the city of Boynton Beach available for our Affordable and Housing Advisory Committee. We have two regular and two alternates available for our Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We have a student and a non-voting student on our Education Youth Advisory Board. We have a regular and alternate available on a Historic Resources Preservation Board. We have two alternates available on the Library Board. We have one regular and two alternates available on the Recreation and Parks Board. And one regular position available on the Senior Advisory Board.
Mayor, there is an applicant for Recreation and Parks.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Pensurga.
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate Sean Conklin to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, to all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move on to consent agenda. Items B, C, and D are very similar, but you know, I'm going to remove them so that we can discuss about those together with the chief, who I believe is here.
Okay, Mayor. I would also like to add C to that because they are all generally talking about the same subjects of D, C, and D. And also F. I'd like to pull F.
Okay. All right, so let's go with, now we got to read them all then. Resolution number 21-144, authorize the city manager and police chief to sign all documents associated with the acceptance and grant agreement for the Florida Department of Transportation Speed and Aggressive Driving Grant, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Chief, if you would just talk about the significance of each one of those. You know, the speed and aggressive driving, the impaired driving grant and the motorcycle safety grant. Just kind of talk in general about those for all of us.
Chief, you're, if you'd like, I can speak about, address all three items and then we'll have to vote on them individually. So if you would, resolution number 21-145, authorize the city manager and police chief to sign all documents associated with the acceptance and grant agreement for the Florida Department of Transportation Impaired Driving Grant, subject to the approval of the city attorney. Resolution 21-146, authorize the city manager and police chief to sign all documents associated with the acceptance and grant agreement for the Florida Department of Transportation Motorcycle Safety Grant.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Michael Gregory, Police Chief. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this a little bit. Obviously, this is a annual grant. You've seen this before. We are very honored to have the opportunity to win this grant opportunity again to supplement our traffic enforcement and city limits of Boynton Beach. Regarding Resolution R21-144, that one's for the speed and aggressive driving. So what this allows us to do is supplement our regular patrol opportunities with targeted locations that we find traffic crashes and/or citations for speed and aggressive driving. So without this, we would be able to do less traffic enforcement and less engagement and education with the community to reduce speed and aggressive driving activities in those target areas. The same, this is very similar for Resolution R21-145, that is for impaired driving. Again, it's a state grant that supplements our overtime to add additional officers on patrol in these areas for education and traffic enforcement. Again, without this one, also, we would be limited in how much we could be present and visible in the corridors where we have increased activity of impaired driving DUI and substance abuse. The last one, Resolution R21-146, is a new enforce. We had, you probably haven't seen this one before. It's on motorcycle safety. So we'll be able to look at areas where we've had motorcycle crashes within a city, within the city, where we've had complaints of motorcycle traffic violations occurring. Look for those highest, those areas with the highest activity levels. And then we'll be able to design education and enforcement operations in those specific areas due to the acceptance of this grant and these grand dollars.
Yeah, one of my quick questions is in regards to vehicles that do not have the proper lights. Whether there's a broken headlight or a broken taillight, does this grant allow us to enforce that violation?
They all do indirectly. While the grant is designed to target these particular problem areas, once we're out in the area, we can certainly do an education enforcement for any violation that the officers observe. And those would be vehicle inspection or vehicle safety violations.
Yeah, last night I was driving down Seacrest. And someone hit the VAC flashers that we have there. I believe it's on Ninth Avenue. And so that's a very dark road. And if it wasn't for those flashers at that crossing, I would not have been able to see that person crossing. And the car to the right of me took a right turn, so I thought they were almost going to hit the persons. But this on my way here, there was a person crossing mid-block around Third Avenue. And so I would want to make sure that the vehicles that are driving along that road have all of the lights needed to be driving in that road. It's almost five years since we lost Timothy Baxter on that road. And so I know that, I think it's on the 16th, there's a proclamation for Awareness Day of people who have died on the road that the TPA has sent out. And so I want to make sure that after the daylight saving starts and people who normally don't drive at night are starting to drive at night and then realize they don't have the proper lights. We can give them that warning first and then make sure that they don't do it again.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Approved.
As for motion approved, Resolution 21-144. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Resolution 21-145. Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 21-146.
Pursued and approved.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item 6F, Resolution Number 21-148.
Yes. I would just like for maybe Eleanor, maybe to come and just do a little promo of our 50th Annual Holiday Parade. You know, how the participation is going and just, just talk in general for the public and for everybody to know what's going on.
Great, thank you. We are having the 50th Annual Holiday Parade scheduled for December 3rd. That's a Saturday. It'll begin at 4:00 PM in downtown Boynton. The application is available on boynton-beach.org/parade. We're asking the community this year to assist us in the selection of a grand marshal. You may nominate an individual that resides or works who has helped out or assisted a fellow resident during the COVID pandemic. For a complete list of all holiday events in Boynton Beach, visit holidayinboynton.com. We encourage our partners to submit pre-public marketing events for consideration and placement on our website. So we hope to get 50 applicants.
Good. Are we having good participation from the high schools with bands and that type of thing?
We are. We called all of them prior to making the decision to have the parade and the feedback was positively.
Very good.
And are we going to have something on the website for groups and organizations to apply?
It is on the website of boynton-beach.org/parade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, 50th year.
Very first one's the first time I was here, but I'm not going to say. You don't look a day over 25.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, state. By any opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over 100,000.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull 7B.
Okay, and I also just want to make comments on 7A. So approve the purchase of 38 replacement vehicles by utilizing the contracts according to Florida law. My big quick comment is the Ford interceptors that have a hybrid engine. I'm glad that we're going to the, the aspect of more fuel efficient vehicles as we do. I know that a lot of the car manufacturers are starting to make trucks as electric vehicles. And so once some of those are able to be purchased, I would hope that the city is kind of on the, on the waiting list to get one of those. And so with that, may I have a motion to approve item 7A?
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Resolution Number 21-149, approve the ranking as recommended by the Evaluation Committee and authorize the city manager to sign agreement with Ferreira Construction Company of Hope Sound as a result of the RFP for Harvey Oyer Jr. Park Marina Boat Ramp Improvement Project.
Yes, Mayor, this is more or less for the public, this boat ramp improvement project. This is the sort of the highlight of our season. And I would just like for this project to have the least impact on, on our city. So if I could get someone to talk about the, the time schedule, the two months that the, that it would be closed. Just to enlighten us on what's going on. Thank you, Gary.
Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. My name is Kevin Ramsey. I am the senior project manager for the city of Boynton.
You're a little bit taller than the last speaker. Can you repeat what you just said?
I am Kevin Ramsey, City Project Senior, Senior Project Manager for the city of Boynton Beach. This project, as we know, it's going to be down for two months. And our, the way that current status of logistics because of COVID, once we get a contractor on board, it was about 40 weeks out to get a dock. So that puts us actually through end of October of, end of September of '22. Which is, as a boater, a good time to take down a dock is, you know, November, December, actually, believe it or not, would be actually the opportune time, if not January, February. I won't really know the hard date until I get that purchase order to a contractor. But if, I'd rather do it mid-January and finish it in the beginning of March, to tell you the truth, or in the February.
Would they, would they still be able to use those, the other ones?
When we shut it down for two months, it's going to be completely shut down.
Completely shut down.
Which gives the city an opportunity to do some other things, maybe, you know, landscape wise or something if we come up with that. Not with that contractor, but it's a time to do something with that park. Have a slide if you need to.
Thank you.
And so I guess the, this is probably not your department, boat permits. Did we issue the same price for the boat permits?
This is Catherine Matus, Assistant City Manager. So we're prorating the permits for that year. So it'll be minus the two months for the closure.
So.
For the price.
But is it 21 to 22?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's likely to be in what months?
January.
January, February, next year? Okay. Seeing no other further questions or comments, nothing online. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. It seems like, Lori, it's been a while since we had a public hearing. We're, we're still doing a lot of building here, right?
We are.
Okay.
We have items going before P and D. I think we'll be getting some next month.
Okay, wonderful. Next, the, the new item, 9B, the Sarah Sims update.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to have a, an update on the amphitheater. I pass by there just about every other day and some things, sometimes things are moving, other times things stall or whatever. But I'd just like to get an update on what's going on.
Gladly give you an update. I'm very excited for this project personally. I am.
We also, I think Gary put some slides together with some photos for the commission too. If John wants to load it, just to kind of show you some progress.
Sure. John, is it up?
Here it is.
Right here. Okay, next slide, please. So we started the construction on this on August 30th. And first we started moving some trees around it. And next slide, John. Then we got to start lifting it up. This is the first course of block on the foundation and we did some waterproofing inside of it. Next, we poured slab on it. And it's actually three inches higher than the one we have here in Town Center. Right now it sits and we are currently having, the railings are made, being made right now. And the nice aluminum full operable shutter panels are being made. And by the end of next week, they're supposed to go to a powder coater, which is our painter. And so we're looking no later than December 15th and I'm pretty confident it's going to be before that. But we'll say December 15th to save face. Okay?
December 15th.
Yeah, so in time for Christmas.
Right, we're trying to get Thanksgiving, but with aluminum and the logistics, it just didn't quite make it. And they're well within their 120 days of building it. But that's why some days it seems like it's quiet. But when we started off, the first whole month of September was just rock and roll. It was interesting, you know. And it's going to be, we had a couple of things came up. We had extended the ramp to meet ADA and but it's going to be a fine job and it's going to be, you know, I think we'll be very proud of it.
Outstanding. Couple of questions. The, let us stay right there. What's the height from that little slab of concrete on the bottom there to the, to the top of the stage there?
The top of that block there is 24 inches, but then we put a six inch, so it's 30 inches, right? 30, 28 to 30 inches.
Okay.
And.
That's good.
Yes, it is. We want to do a 36 originally, but with the Jason Grace meet ADA, we'd have to do a switchback ramp. It was more than what had been planned. So we did extend the ramp area and raised and lowered it down to 28 inches, which is still, the one out here is 24. So you're still higher than this one and.
That's good.
Something. This will be nice.
That'll be a bit much to wrap it around like that.
It'd have been, we'd take up a lot more space.
The other question on, on the platform there, the floor part. Do you have outlets and how many up there?
We have five.
Five.
We have five boxes and 10 outlets, 10 20 amp circuits, dedicated circuits, so you can run amps and you can do a lot of stuff.
Hold on, how many amps are actually total in that?
100. We have 100 amps worth of service.
That's, that's a lot of. That's that's a lot of noise.
That's almost the whole house. So I mean, a small house.
So I just, you know, do we let the neighbors know that they're going to hear some music?
They will. They're bringing on speakers for now, but we have power going up to the top of the structure already, a conduit. So there's room for expansion down the road, but we definitely have power into the slab of that thing and more than enough to.
All of the power will be run by that box that's on the west side of the platform?
Yes, sir. And that's our in-house staff doing that.
Oh, so anyone who want to use that facility would have to obviously come through the city and get the key for to unlock that and we have someone on site and okay.
It's locked right now. That's how we've been doing it.
But okay. Very good, Kevin. Thank you.
Next is our, we have no unfinished business. We're moving on to new business. Resolution 21-150, adopt the Boynton Beach Complete Streets Mobility Plan and Mobility Fee Technical Report. Before we begin, you know, this was part of the first strategic plan that I was a part of, I believe in April of 2017. And this is something that I wish we started sooner. Because when we look at the aspects of mobility in the city, it's it's not as where it should be. With the re-milling of Seacrest Boulevard, we do not have wide sidewalks. We do not have bike lanes. And that's the aspect of mobility that the the city needs. To look at it, the totality of it, rather than just vehicles getting to go where they are coming, getting to go where they want to go at the highest rate of speed possible. We need to worry about the people first. So Ms. Radigan, if you'd like to begin?
Yes, good evening. My name is Amanda Radigan. I am the principal planner with the development department. With me today is Jonathan Paul. He is from New Urban Concepts. And he's been acting as a consultant on this project. We do have a PowerPoint to share with you, which is up on the screens. He will be doing the first portion of the PowerPoint and I will come in somewhere around the middle to finish up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jonathan Paul, Principal of New Urban Concepts. I'm going to present to you this evening the city's complete street mobility plan and the proposed mobility fee. Next slide. I've been doing this for a number of years now, almost 25. And I'm working on with communities throughout Florida, including here locally, Palm Beach Gardens, West Palm Beach, Wellington, and the Towne Lake Park. Next slide. Mobility, Complete Streets Mobility Plan lays out a vision over the next 25 years of how people in the city are going to move around. And the mobility fee is a transparent way for new development to mitigate for its impact to the city's transportation system. Next slide. Just in Boynton Beach, similar to many communities throughout Florida, have prioritized movement by motor vehicle, specifically Palm Beach County has done that. And it's very similar to Sarasota County. And back when I was working on Sarasota County's mobility plan, mobility fee, there was a lot of community discussion about what's the best way to move forward? Continue to plan for cars or start to plan for people? Next slide. So there's been a lot of debate as to whether or not congestion is actually a problem or a sign of prosperity. There are many rural parts of Florida, both in the central part of the state and the north part of the state, that have ample road capacity. And that's due in large part to businesses and people not necessarily wanting to live there or run a business there. So congestion, while it may seem that it impacts people's quality of life, is generally actually a sign of economic prosperity. Next slide, please. And so communities that have tried to build their way out of congestion, you're seeing a little bit of that on Interstate 95 now in this community, have really found it doesn't work. There was a promise to widen the Katy Freeway in Houston. It was going to solve all the community's problems and speed up traffic, reduce delays and make it safer. Everything that was proposed, the reverse happened. Speeds went down, there was greater delay, and there was actually a significant increase in the number of crashes. So communities throughout the country that have tried to build their way out of congestion have run into what's known as a law of induced demand. Otherwise, most people have heard of it as build it and they'll come. So as soon as road capacity is added, people will change their travel patterns and use that capacity. And shortly after it's done, it'll be congested again. So really, there needs to be a better way to move forward for how to move people. And so the city is pursuing development of a mobility fee so that the city commission can prioritize how money is spent, where it's collected, and what it's spent on within the city. And it really gives the the city the capability to determine its own mobility future. Whereas right now, today, development in the city pays a road impact fee to Palm Beach County. And Palm Beach County has broad latitude in where it spends that money and how it spends that money. Next slide, please. So how are mobility fees different than the current roadway impact fees that are in place today for the county? The county's road impact fees primarily fund road capacity. They're generally based on the capacity of roads and how quickly you can move a vehicle from point A to point B. In the vast majority of the urban area of the city of Boynton Beach, there hasn't actually been any new road capacity added. And there are actually very few needs for additional road capacity. The biggest need is actually for, as the mayor indicated, wider sidewalks, bicycle lanes, transit circulators, multimodal improvements to get people around the community, whether to to work, to places of worship, to restaurants, or to the the rail station. And hopefully, at some point, future rail service along the lines of a bright line is improving today. And essentially, mobility fees are a tool to allow the city to do that. One of the other big factors, and this is important to state on the record, for the city of Boynton Beach to consider this, is over of the last 17 years, since 2003, development within the city of Boynton Beach has sent to Palm Beach County $30 million in road impact fees. During that time, the city has received just over $1 million in improvements from the county. And so this is, you know, there are legal requirements related to where money is collected, where it's spent. This is the biggest imbalance of any municipality within Palm Beach County by a pretty large magnitude. And so, you know, moving forward into the future, the city really wants the ability to have that money that's being spent or collected or paid by developers to actually be spent within the city, not paid to the county. And to the extent the money has been spent, a lot of it has been spent to add road capacity in the western portion of Palm Beach County. Next slide, please. And this is just a graphic showing some of those collections. Quite a few of them were before the the Great Recession in 2006, where the city had a lot of economic development activity. I believe as you're starting to see a lot of activity go around City Hall here and within your downtown, the city is poised for another significant increase. And really, the the ideal goal is to reverse that trend and to see that money stay within the community. Next slide, please. And so there are a number of steps that were taken to develop the city's complete street mobility plan. We looked at existing plans, projected future growth, and really focused on what are the most appropriate types of projects to see within the city. Next slide. And so it really is about moving people, whether somebody chooses to walk, bicycle, ride transit, use a scooter or electric skateboard or some type of neighborhood trolley circulator, or even to use Uber and Lyft. There are a number of ways to get around the community as opposed to just driving a motor vehicle. Next slide. And so some of the roadway improvements, most of those within the general area are to Interstate 95. There are a couple of projects that are included in the mobility plan, including the widening of high ridge and minor road. But the vast majority of these corridors, you know, are funded or identified in the long range transportation plan. And a few of them are within the city. Some of them are on the periphery of the city. Next slide, please. And so we looked at the future traffic conditions out to 2045. And the interstate is showing congestion. And portions of Wilbright are showing congestion within the city and a portion of US1. But the vast majority of roadways within the city, 20 plus years into the future, are actually showing to be operating at an acceptable level of travel. Next slide. And as I mentioned before, there are two road capacity projects that are in the city's complete streets plan. It is the widening of high ridge and also the widening of minor. Next slide, please.
Can you explain what LRTP stands for?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. LRTP is the Long Range Transportation Plan. And that is prepared by the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency. And it projects out into the future, in this instance, 2045, what the community's roadway needs are, what the bicycle needs are, the sidewalk needs, and also the transit needs within the community. And that, the Long Range Transportation Plan and Transportation Planning Agency are made up of local elected officials throughout the county, in addition to several county commissioners. And so there's a lot of community input that goes into that plan. And it really does serve as a basis for identifying future needs. Thank you for that question, actually. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda to go into some further detail on the plan and the land use assessment.
I'm going to ask if the commission has any other questions before you step away. Yes, Commissioner Penzerga.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both to Jonathan and Amanda for the wonderful presentation you put forward. I enjoyed looking through all the technical aspects. One of the items I struggle to understand is how it is that this problem came about. Could you help me, as well as the public, understand how it is justified to collect $30 million and then only to bring back only 1 million back into the city's investments? How is that possible and how does that continue today?
That's a great question, Commissioner. The city has actually been embarking on this process for roughly two years now. It really came to light back in 2016 when a report was done related to a restaurant in downtown West Palm Beach and its assessment on mobility or road impact fees. I think the restaurant was going to be assessed $154,000 for basically just remodeling the interior of an existing building. And from that, the Downtown Development Authority in West Palm Beach took a pretty broad look into how the county is collecting its money and how it's spending its money. And what it found was there are some pretty big disparities. Delray Beach and Boynton Beach being the number two or one and two within the community, where a large portion of the money was being collected by the county and spent in the western suburbs. And a lot of communities started to question, why is that? Also, a lot of communities, especially all, pretty much every municipality east of Interstate 95 throughout the county, there are only a handful of road capacity projects that are needed. And to the extent they're needed, they're largely the state roads, not the county roads or city roads. And so Palm Beach Gardens and the city of West Palm Beach actually started in 2016 developing a mobility plan, mobility fee, primarily to address the county's collection of money and the the lack of road projects in the city, but the significant need for multimodal projects. And so Boynton Beach, you know, they were following on those those efforts. And I believe in 2018, they started the process to really look at it. And as we looked further and further into the details, that's when the stark reality came out about how much money the city is missing out on and how little of it's been invested back in this community. So it's been an iterative process. I will say there are a number of communities in Florida, in Palm Beach County, that are going through this right now. The county is not necessarily going away lightly. They have sued Palm Beach Gardens. And just yesterday, I was actually in trial as an expert witness for Palm Beach Gardens in the lawsuit versus the county. And so it's something a lot of cities are questioning and struggling with. And there's a lot of communities that are looking at Boynton Beach, looking at Palm Beach Gardens and West Palm to move forward and to come up with a different way.
If I could add to that, please. How it's actually happening is when we look at our city, we're using the city boundary as what is being collected and what is being spent from the county into the city. That's not the way the county distributes money. They have zones called benefit zones. And the way they use those funds is anything collected within our city can technically be spent anywhere within the benefit zone. If you look at Boynton Beach's benefit zone, it does stretch from the east, just about the east coast, all the way far past to the other side of the county. So their benefit areas include much more than just the city of Boynton Beach.
I believe it goes to Lake Worth and 441.
441, yeah. I believe it stretches all the way to 441.
That's kind of where the southeast, that is the northwest.
So Mayor and Amanda, Jonathan, the natural follow-up question to that is, who or what determines the benefit zone? How does one change an item like that?
Well, the the county has stated they've gone through significant analyses. It's interesting, when they first started doing fees back in late 1970s, early 80s, there were actually 41 zones in Palm Beach County. In 2011, they reduced it to, I believe, 14 zones. And in 20 or 2005, they reduced it down to five zones. So their zones continued to get bigger and bigger, allowing them greater flexibility to spend money within that zone. So just, you know, as I mentioned, I mean, you're, this zone goes all the way out pretty much to the urbanized area of western Palm Beach County. And it's a large zone and those funds can be spent anywhere within there. Really, the the challenge would be as the county goes towards an next update of the road impact fee to question those zones or to take the steps the city is doing right now and adopt its own mobility plan and its own mobility fee to keep money local. That's likely your best opportunity to ensure the funds are spent locally.
So would this road impact, excuse me, the mobility fee, would that be in addition to or in replacement of the road impact?
It is intended to replace the county's roadway impact fee.
And what authority do we have to do that?
Florida statute provides local governments the opportunity to adopt an alternative mobility funding system such as a mobility fee. But you do have to develop a mobility plan to do that. Then you go through the process to do both the plan, which we're talking about this evening, and the fee. And that is, in essence, what Palm Beach County is challenging Palm Beach Gardens right now, today, whether or not statute does or doesn't permit that. And so that's going to be a challenge and an issue that goes before the courts here. And hopefully, there's some resolution.
What is the outcome or where does it stand today with West Palm Beach Downtown Authority? You mentioned the story began with the DDA. And now the lawsuit to challenge this idea is, you said Palm Beach Gardens.
Palm Beach Gardens, yes.
So what happened to West Palm Beach if they were the one initiating this?
Interestingly enough, there were some changes in leadership and changes in the commission. They had a plan and a fee submitted, completed, and they elected at the time not to move forward with it. They reached out recently to update that plan and fee. And I think at this point now, they're waiting to see what happens with the gardens.
Yes, Commissioner Katz. You mentioned that, I guess, us and Delray are the two worst in terms of the despair. in terms of the disparity of, you know, payments versus receipt back. We get 1 million back on 30. It's like 3%. What like, what does the average municipality get back? Are they getting back 10, 20, 40 versus our three?
No, it's, it varies. But I will say, you know, interestingly enough, you know, Palm Beach Gardens pretty much got back what it put in. Jupiter got back more than what it put in. It really depends on which area of the community. But, you know, Boca, I believe, got about 35% of what it put in. West Palm got about 35% of what it put in. For whatever reason, Delray and Boynton, by far and away, are the two. I believe Delray's roughly contributed about 23 million, and they've received just under 2 million improvements back. So it's definitely not been uniform within Palm Beach County.
Does the funds that the county receives from this do the funds? Are they used purely for county roadway improvements? Or are there instances where these funds are used to offset the costs of development and developers' costs? Like, say, a developer had to adjust a county roadway out there west of the city. Would this be some sort of enticement or, you know, or subsidy from the county?
Not directly. But the county does charge a uniform road impact fee throughout the whole county. And what that uniform rate basically says is travel in downtown Delray or downtown Boynton is the same as out in the suburban part of the community. So part of the back and forth has been, you know, is the county using monies collected from the cities to keep the fee lower in the western portion of the county where they have the greatest roadway needs?
And that was where I was getting at, is that it, it's painful enough to just simply look at the ratio and the return, but then to know that it might be used to offset costs of private enterprise that are seeking profit through development of no benefit to the city. That's kind of just salting the wound that it might be being used as a subsidy of some sort indirectly or directly. Thank you.
Jonathan, before you go, I think my quick question is, is that, I know that we're the worst in the sense of return on impact fees, but you said you, the state of Florida. Are there other cities that are worse than us that you have observed?
Oh, no, I have not seen. I mean, just in terms of, there's a lot of communities throughout Florida that have this issue. I have yet to see a municipality. Although I am working right now in Port St. Lucie, in St. Lucie County. And the numbers are similar in terms of how much money is being collected. And there, it's being sat on, more so than necessarily being expended. But this is extreme. Boynton Beach is definitely an extreme example. You know, would be an extreme example statewide and certainly an extreme example in Palm Beach County.
My next question would be successful cities. Are you aware of that in the state of Florida, where the county has sued a city and the city has won the ability to have the mobility fee?
Be honest with you, most communities, with the exception of Palm Beach County, have come to an agreement with their municipalities and have worked something out in terms of either revenue cost sharing or funding of county improvements as part of the city's plan. Palm Beach County has taken a different approach, and it's moved forward with the suit. And so this is the first one in the state as it relates to mobility plan, mobility fees versus county road impact.
Okay. And, you know, I just want to give the residents here a little bit better example is that between Atlantic Avenue and Boynton Beach Boulevard, there are no other crossings across the turnpike. Our impact fees affect the roads out there. For example, the expansion of Lyons Road recently in the past 10 years. That is where our impact fees have gone, even though there is no easy access for any of the new residential homes built on Lyons Road to the city of Boynton Beach. And as you mentioned, a vacant lot in our downtown area, who puts a single-family home, has the same cost for impact fee of a zero's lot line in the agricultural reserve. So I think, you know, I'm glad that we were here and that we can move forward. But it was such a shock because it has not gotten better in the last five years with the amount of money that the city has put in to the impact fee and what we have gotten back out. In addition, when we had to put, when we connected our water treatment plant, we realized that the expansion of Wilbright Road was not necessarily done proper. And so that was one of the reasons why it took so long for that pipe to get put in. Because when we looked at what the county did for that expansion project, it wasn't done properly. And the aspect of the impact fees, because of the conversations at the TPA, is that it is only used for vehicles to go, to have more vehicles on the road. And that is something that they feel is advantageous. However, I do not feel it is advantageous. The 561 plan, I do not feel is advantageous. There's a lot of things that the county is doing in order to try to raise revenues for transportation because the money that they do have is not spent to the best use. So those are my comments. So thank you, Jonathan.
Mayor.
Jonathan will be available once the presentation is finished, too. He will be back to keep going with the presentation.
I would, but I do have a question first. So just in terms of how I move forward, I know we're moving forward with this mobility fee or this mobility structure in the future. But in the interim for potential developments that are coming, is there any way that we can cease from having to pay out those impact fees with the understanding of the injustice, basically, that has been being committed against us for the last few years?
Likely something we need to talk further with the city's legal counsel. Don't really want to get into a whole lot of those details, but there are probably some venues available, but they're probably best discussed with legal counsel.
Right. And I understand that it's not your place to answer that question, but I think that's something to just entertain, you know, because regardless of how we move forward with creating this plan, as developments come through, especially with all the private developments that are slated to come through over the next few years, that means that we're still dishing out millions of dollars and having no recourse to receive those until this plan gets put in place, if it ultimately does, as we saw with West Palm Beach. So that's just something to put out there for the commission to ponder. You know, I would gladly, you know, go to the mat on this because this is just, it's atrocious. I mean, yeah, this is terrible.
And we can talk about at the end of the presentation, next steps and where we are with everything that would be required to implement to. It, it doesn't have to be a very long wait until implementation, but the timeline is still up in the air. This was the first step to get feedback from the commission and ensure we want to move forward in this direction.
Mayor.
Yes.
I have two follow-up questions. Number one, and I'm blanking a little bit. It's been a long day for me. Number one, Amanda and Jonathan, is there any evidence to show that the county is willing to develop alternatives? You mentioned cost sharing. The answer is no. I see you faking your head.
Unfortunately, I mean, given this is my fourth local government doing this on, at least at the record, they stated no. But I believe the city manager, we are trying to reach out to see if there is some option available.
Yes, we're going to be sitting down and meeting with them again to talk about our plans and what compromise or perhaps what alternatives maybe.
Okay. It's just what I'm hearing is, in order for this to move forward, we're going to drive into a lawsuit, which is what I'm hearing, into a legal battle.
Not necessarily.
Well, what they're saying is the county is unrelenting. There's no evidence to show that they're willing to negotiate.
That's not necessarily anything because we're not here to protect the future. We're just doing what we think is best for the city.
There may also be a precedent that's set by the ruling based on what happens with the Gardens lawsuit. So if it's favorable towards them, hopefully that could be something that we are able to benefit from as well.
And because if, let's say, it isn't favorable, the judge creates other language.
Another precedent.
To allow other municipalities because of the disparity that we have is very different than the Gardens.
Understood. That was, that's great. The second follow-up question is, would a private developer in the city specify how that money is then spent? So for example, let's say I'm building whatever I'm building. And in order to make that project work, I need the following things around my area. Could the private developer specify how those funds are spent?
Just to clarify, you mean, once a mobility fee is enacted and we are implementing a mobility fee?
I meant the road impact.
So similar.
Currently, yeah, the existing.
So for example, what happened with Renaissance Commons Boulevard and the widening of Gateway Boulevard? Is that an aspect of impact fee that a developer was able to widen a road instead of giving the money directly to the county?
I'm not sure about that specific instance, but in general, if a developer made a capacity improvement, and that capacity improvement occurred on a county facility, they could request credit from the county towards that. So really, that would be something that would be.
Is there precedent on that? Because you say could request. I want to know if that works.
Well, typically, the improvements would have to be identified on some plan. So they'd have to be identified on a capital improvements program, a long-range transportation plan. And given the exception of high ridge and minor, there are not a whole lot of projects identified for road capacity. But, you know, a private developer could always request for the county commission to add it and to get credit. Certainly, they could do it, and it has been done in the past. You know, but really, it would be the decision of the county as to whether or not to grant credit.
Would those road improvements be required to be immediately adjacent to someone's project?
Well, the issue sometimes when you have immediate adjacent is they consider it site impact, not external capacity. And so oftentimes, they will not give credit for site-related improvements. But if it was something that benefited the overall community in providing capacity beyond that for the developer, they could certainly request credit. And the county does have a process in its ordinance for them to do so.
So the reason I'm asking these questions is because I'm looking for a potential solution, an alternative. Tell me if this sounds ridiculous or feasible, not feasible. Could the city make it a requirement on developers to request the county to make certain road improvements in our area? I don't know if that's feasible. Do you see what I'm trying to say? That we get the developers to do the requesting for us to divert some of the funds back?
Good. Or you could also ask the development community to say, where's our money being spent at? And the developers themselves could actually mount a challenge to the county. But no, yes, they could certainly do that. Again, it really depends on, do you want to continue to add road capacity or not?
No, no, I understand. I'm looking for a short-term option in the meantime.
And it would only be subject to the roadway capacities. Once we go through what's actually inside the mobility plan, it covers several things where the impact fees could not cover.
All right. Well, thank you so much for both of your time.
Okay. So thank you, Jonathan, for.
I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
And I apologize if I missed it. You've said a lot, and I thank you for it because it is valuable. The premise of these lawsuits of our actions is the state statute permits the alternative option. What is the county's legal objection to Gardens, West Palm, potentially ours? If there is a statutory parallel route to take, what is their argument that the parallel route being exercised by Gardens or West Palm or us is not permissible under state law?
They are pointing to the county charter, which states the county charter gives them the right to establish level of service standards on county roads and to collect county road impact fees throughout the county. So they are stating their charter authority, and they're saying, you know, they feel that it's, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they're stating their charter gives them the right to do so.
And Jim could give us their answer or their complaint, which would probably have that information. If you'd like to have that legal document that they stated. If someone prevailed in this effort in Palm Beach County or anywhere for that matter, and the argument from the challenging party, the county is, you know, our charter says this, essentially, a ruling in a city's favor would be that your charter is inconsistent with state law, which supersedes the county charter? Or I don't know if that's a question for Legal More.
First comment, there's a recent pleading in the Gardens lawsuit that would be very informative for the commission to read, which sets forth the county's position regarding the authority or the power of their charter over what's being proposed by the cities that are engaged in litigation.
And part of the counties is that we can still move forward with the mobility fee. It's just that we can't touch their impact fee. So that we can't state that the money that is collected for impact fees. So one of the things that we can do as a developer with our town square project is to ask them to prove the nexus as well. If I'm not mistaken, Jim, is that correct?
That's part of it. Their position is, is that they're going to collect their fee. If the city wants to collect a mobility fee, that's just going to be a supplemental fee. So if you think of the end result of that, the developers here will be paying two sets of fees if the county is right about the balance of power issue.
So it would be a similar situation to how we pay for fire and police, where residents of our city remit taxes to the county that pay for PBSO and county fire while simultaneously footing the bill for, like, it would become another service that we would be forced to double tax if that was the route that we went.
Or another example would be that the residents in Boynton Beach pay to the school board fees that are spent to build schools in other parts of the county as well. That would be like double dipping? Is this the best practice as far as you guys?
I mean, the aspect of it is, is that the county, being a charter county, has different rights versus it being a non-charter county, according to Florida statutes. That is an aspect of Florida constitutional law that we really shouldn't be getting too much into at this meeting right here regarding a mobility fee. However, what I would say is that if this commission is so inclined that we look into filing a lawsuit against the county preemptively, asking them to prove the nexus so that where the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we spent in order to build our chambers and other buildings, we would have to have them to prove the nexus that the money that our impact fees that is paid to them actually benefits us as the developer. So I don't know if Palm Beach Garden has included that because they may have not paid any impact fees recently?
Correct. They weren't doing a whole lot of, you know, local government development activity to the extent you have some activity that resulted in a payment of a fee. Again, part of the legal, the city attorney regarding standing, but that would be a hurdle the city would need to claim.
But let me, could I just point out that these issues that you're raising are issues that the city administration and consultants to the city have been exploring for quite some time. There's lots of options available. The item tonight is not to make decisions regarding what type of litigation to engage in or to threaten, but to move the mobility, the Complete Streets Mobility Plan, a step forward to position it for adoption by. But to move the mobility, um, the the complete streets mobility plan a step forward to position it for adoption by ordinance. Sometime in the near future, we'll have the benefit of the outcome of the Gardens case at that particular time. And that will certainly influence the kinds of choices you as the commission would make to decide on what to do about um trying to get a better deal for. For the city and of course, as the manager has pointed out, she'll be engaged in that same process. Uh, with the county administrator when the opportunity for a meeting is is uh rolling around.
Do we have a date on the Gardens case?
It's on, it's in trial right now.
In trial right now, and I believe it wraps up on Friday. You know, how, you know, I can't really say when the judge will or won't provide a ruling, but it is supposed to conclude this Friday.
Jonathan could confirm this because he's had the benefit of sitting through that and being prepared for it as well. The outcome of that trial, which is on an injunction issue in the case, may not be dispositive to all of the issues. That could be reached in in other litigation, so it may answer some of the questions, it may not answer all of them.
Correct.
Correct, because basically the garden stopped remitting payments to the county. And so the the question, the legal, the limited legal question is, is that is the Palm Beach Garden allowed to stop paying? The the county based upon their mobility ordinance, not whether their mobility ordinance is valid.
So, oh, so they're having a whole different conversation in a way? Or I mean, I know it's a nexus to what we're talking about, but.
No, no, i- it's definitely um, you know, consistent with your, what you're talking about. But what they challenged him on was not the ability of the gardens to do a plan in a fee. Because, you know, as of January first, twenty twenty, the gardens no longer collected the county's road impact fee.
Okay, and and that that goes to, that goes to my question that I was asking earlier, if we would be able to just stop permitting payments and what does that look like?
If if you move forward with an ordinance and adopting that ordinance, um, upon the effective date, you could go that.
After enacting the mobility fee.
Correct, we would, we'd be violating law if we don't have the the Florida statute mobility fee.
Understood.
Right, they stopped paying their impact fees.
Can you speak into the mic?
They stopped paying their um road impact fees at the same time that they adopted their mobility fee. Um, and with that came a termination of an ILA between the city and and the county, and that's what formally stops the payment.
Naturally, that makes sense.
Jonathan, did, I know at one point the county was saying they were going to put liens on the developers. If the impact fees were not paid, um, did they ever do that?
No, they did not. Um, and I'm going through a very similar situation in St. Lucie County versus Port St. Lucie today. Uh, where the county had stipulated such and essentially, um, we were in one sixty four mediation in that instance. Um, they're waiting for the county to update its study and then we'll continue negotiating. Um, but i- it's a pretty big step for a local government to take to lean properties. Um, related to fees and, you know, it is a tool they have. But then it also brings them a whole lot of people to now also now standing and maybe wouldn't have had it prior. So um, i- i- it's a big step and the the county elected to pursue the uh the city as opposed to leaning properties.
Mayor, one final.
Can we let Amanda finish the presentation?
Yes, that's fine.
Jonathan, it won't go anywhere. Um, well, okay, so thank you for that discussion. I think it was really helpful. I think the next few um slides are going to be relatively easy compared to that conversation. Um, I wanted to talk about what is actually contained within the um complete streets mobility plan. Um, the first thing uh that is included is a land assessment. Um, we defined mobility hubs and mobility districts. This slide um that should be in front of you now um shows the primary mobility hubs. We looked for groupings of active areas and destinations in several categories, existing projects, approved or under construction projects. Planned projects and then either conceptual or potential redevelopments. Um, so what ended up turning into the primary mobility hub is essentially the downtown Boynton Beach area. To orient yourself a little bit, number four on that map is the city hall. And number eight is the town square boundary. So you're essentially looking at an expanded area between the intersection of federal and Boynton Beach Boulevard. Next slide. We also identified um a secondary mobility hub, which is on the western side of the city. It runs along Congress um from just north of Gateway to just south of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Um, to help you orient yourself, the pink box, which is labeled number eleven, is the Boynton Beach Mall. Next slide. So we also identified three mobility districts. Number one, which is at the top of the map, is the tri rail area. Number two, central to the map, um, the pink area is the Woolbright area. And then the southernmost pink square um is the medical area, which includes Bethesda Hospital. Next slide. The other portion of the plan talks about a transition from LOS, which is level of service, to QOS, quality of service. Um, and what it does, it helps us move towards vision zero. It allows us to start grading our roadways based on posted speed limits and not um capacity. So. Roads would be able to be graded A through E based on the speed limit. And those types of speed limits would be um planned to be or appropriate in certain types of locations. Next slide. The other big advantage of switching to quality of service is it also allows us to start grading other facilities other than just roads. So the top chart um allows us to look at ways to grade bikes. So for example, um, a five foot bike lane, which is protected, would be graded an A. The chart to the right looks at ways to start assessing transit. Um, and it goes by type of transportation and head times, how often they're stopping. So for example, a bus with less than fifteen minute headways would be graded an A. And the last chart looks at ways to start grading pedestrian facilities. Um, it would go by the width of the facility and the amenities around the facility. So a twelve foot trail that has either parking or street trees would be graded an A. Next slide. The next portion of the plan are the actual complete street mobility improvements and they are categorized by type. Um, what you're looking at to your right is a map of the existing pedestrian facilities. Um, it is existing, it's not rating quality, it's just they are there. And to the left, you're looking at a photograph of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Next slide. This is the plan proposal for pedestrian infrastructure. So the, you could see that the picture on the left proposes um on street parking on MLK, undergrounding of utilities, street trees and lighting. And to the right, you see the new proposed plan for pedestrian facilities. One of the biggest projects is a sidewalk improvement program. Um, the shades of green highlight the percent of sidewalks um within that area. So the darkest areas reflect the most need. So this is a way for us to start spending dollars in areas that need improvements. Next slide. So this is the same system for our bike facilities. To the right, you see existing bike lanes and to the left, um, you see Southwest Twenty Third Street. Next slide. And this outlines some of the projects included in the plan. Um, Southwest Twenty Third Avenue um is essentially a whole reconstruction of the road, which would include buffered bike lanes and shared use paths. Um, another improvement within the plan would be um the whole length of Seacrest from the north to south boundary. Um, a relocation of the curb and adding buffered bike lanes. Next slide. This is the existing transit in the city. Um, we have a pretty well defined bus network. Next slide. And one of the proposals around transit would be to include a people mover or some sort of shuttle service. That loops between the mobility hubs and the mobility districts. Next slide.
Why do those wheels not look round?
I'm sorry? Why, oh, why do those loops not look round?
They don't look round.
An eight.
Glue hexagons.
Went a little. Um, so the last um infrastructure, I'm sorry, could you go to the next slide? So the last set of infrastructure um that we talk about in the plan are blueways. This is essentially a consolidation from the existing Blue Way Bike Way Trails Trails Plan. Um, and this tries to activate our Blue Way Network through additional crossings and recreational launches. Next slide.
Amanda, I I am curious about that, go back please. Um, I don't know if you have the answer to the question, but in what way are we talking about clearing them out? Are we talking about pesticide um sprays? What do you mean by the Blue Way um improvements?
It's it's adding additional crossings to the blueways and recreational launches. It's not a clearing out, this is diagramming all of the canal systems and waterways in the city. And adding areas for crossings and recreational facilities in existing blueways.
Got it. So more transportation of the or across or. Within, not necessarily the waterway itself.
Yes.
Got it.
So I believe in Pioneer Park and Sky Lake, we have the freshwater launch for boats, kayaks and canoes. And hopefully with the development of the Eco Park, we can have another freshwater uh launch. And so that way you can connect the those two.
I'd I'd like to see that like at JC Park and and some of those other water touching um parks as well.
On the the intracoastal.
I think we have a kayak launch at JC, don't we? And we have one at intracoastal.
Oh, I know, also we do, but not at JC.
I thought we, okay.
So Harvey Warrior has the actual kayak launch for ADA accessibility. You know, a intercoastal has beach, um, and I don't believe JC has the ability to get down there. So that is something that hopefully we can look into the future.
Yeah, JC just has the dock that you can walk out, but nothing to actually launch from there.
And I believe that that's called out as a future, um, if I'm reading this map correctly. So we have the current one shown in a pink color and then um the future one shown in a purple color. If it is not on the list, we can definitely take a look at the master list of projects and make sure that it is on there. Um, so this slide just shows a compiled um graphic of the different projects and types of projects. And these projects are also in list format in the plan as well, um detailed and numbered. Next slide. And turn it back over to Jonathan.
Thank you, Amanda. Um, there are a number of steps to actually go into developing a mobility plan and a mobility fee. And this sort of lays out um seven of them. The city has already done step number one, which is amend its comprehensive plan. Um, it's in the process today of um the complete streets mobility plan, mobility fee. And then the next step would actually be the implementing ordinance. And then from that, there are a lot of administrative procedures and actual prioritization of the projects that would occur. Next slide, please. And so um similar to the mobility plan, there are a number of steps that actually went into developing the mobility fee. Um, and part of that is to address um many of the legal requirements as it relates to both case law and Florida statute. And one thing to consider, um, the mobility fee as currently constructed is not citywide. Um, the area that you see in green is the the roughly what's considered the core area of the city. That's the area that would be part of the mobility fee. The areas in purple or any future annexation areas would stay actually under the county's current system. And this was largely due to both the the needs for improvements in those areas and also the likelihood of redevelopment. Of those areas, um, and I believe somewhat the redevelopment potential of that area in purple is is somewhat limited. This is something similar to what the the Gardens has done, um, even what um downtown West Palm had proposed as well. It's to not include the entirety of the city. Um, and I think part of that was also just an abundance of caution as, you know, the city moves forward at this time. So the areas in pink would stay under the current system, pay the city. Um, county roadway impact fees to the extent there is um any county road, county roadway impact fee due to new development. And the area in green would fall under the mobility fee. Next slide, please.
But one second, Commissioner Frisero seems to be straining his eyes to see. Amanda, can you possibly tell us what roads that are that demarcation line?
Largely, it's on Congress um Avenue to the west and then it includes the uh the mall. So the area that sort of jogs out from sort of that straight line is Congress Avenue. And then north of Boynton Beach Boulevard, I believe that it follows one of the canals.
Down the north side, it follows a canal and then included as we move south is the commercial area around Congress. Roughly, well, just about exactly the same um mobility, secondary mobility hub that we saw, the the mall area. Um, and then it juts back out to meet Congress and follows south.
What is that little eye lip there?
That is a vacant.
No, the green.
One further south.
Green.
Yeah, so that is the vacant canute, what we refer to as the canute parcel, um, where the cows live. And there's a, there's a billboard sign on that property.
Potential for development there, okay, understood.
Um, so I got a question is, is that, does that mean we could do mobility and infrastructure on the the east side? Of Congress and not on the west side?
That's a great question. If we could go to the next slide, um, we will, we can answer that. Uh, could you press one, press one more time, one of the, there we go, okay, thank you.
So um to to answer that question, um, so the mobility fee assessment area. Is where mobility fees are assessed on new development at the building permit stage. Mobility fee benefit district is where the money can be spent. And so this is really the the issue with the uh currently the county, their district spreads all the way. Uh, to the very western extent of the uh the urbanized area of the county. What we propose is that the totality of the uh city would be included in the benefit district. Because folks that um are in the city don't necessarily just stop right at city limits or stop at the uh mobility fee assessment area. There is travel outside of that. Um, so we are providing the city flexibility to spend money outside of the assessment area. But one thing we're doing as part of the ordinance is requiring that they actually have to make a written finding. Of why that's actually being spent outside the assessment boundaries to, you know, basically provide a check and balance. So to the extent that there is a mobility benefit provided, it could be spent outside those limits. Um, but we do want to require at least an analyses and some type of documentation. That's performed to say why you could do so. And that would really, the intent is the assessment area would be the primary area where the fees are spent. Um, but there may be an instance um outside of that area within the city that you'd want to spend some funds as well. Next slide. And so this is just um a part of a comparison that was done between the county's existing fee. And the mobility fee proposed for the city. And you'll see that most of them come in slightly below the county's existing fee. Um, so as it relates to a single family residence of two thousand square feet, the county's charge is four thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. The cities would be three thousand eight hundred and forty. Um, similar for for multifamily, um, what the city is doing. What the city is doing, the county charges a flat rate per dwelling unit. Doesn't matter if it's one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, four bedrooms. It's the same rate. To address affordability, the city is proposing to base it on number of bedrooms. So if you have one bedroom, you pay $1,200. If you had two bedroom, $2,400. And what you see is you're actually capturing the real impact of a use as opposed to just saying every dwelling unit pays the same. And I will point one difference also with the county and the city related to the single family. The city's is based on a rate per square foot. So if you build a tiny home, you'd pay a lower rate for a tiny home or an affordable house. If you built a large residence, you'd pay increasingly more. The county says it doesn't matter whether you're a 200-square-foot tiny home or a 6,000-square-foot suburban home. You pay $4,717 regardless. So the city's fee, and this is what I'm doing in pretty much every municipality and county that I work in, affordability is a big issue. And there's a pretty strong correlation between the size of a unit and the impact as well as the cost. So therefore, this fee recognizes smaller units do have less of an impact and should therefore pay less of a fee. Larger units have a greater impact and would pay a proportionally higher fee as well. And similar to small-scale multifamily residential, 600 square feet or less, the county charges $2,292 because it basically doesn't have that classification. It would just be multifamily. In the city, it would pay $992 per bedroom or $1,800 for two bedroom. So the fee really does try to be cognizant of affordability as well, something that's currently not in the county system. Now, I will say that the county does have other programs available related to affordability, and you generally have to apply for those to be eligible. Here, the fee is structured such to address affordability upfront. Next slide, please. Similar, there's not a whole lot of industrial land in the city, but more likely, most likely be redevelopment. But the county's fee is 1,500. The city's is 1,300. For office, it's 2,700 in the city, 3,400 within the county. And then as you get into retail, it varies as well. The city is also proposing a local city category. So if you're a local mom-and-pop retail operation, you would actually see a reduction in the fee based on impact, whereas the county just does a flat rate of $8,000 across the board. And you see somewhat, some of the reasons those fees are lower, one, trip lengths tend to be shorter within urban areas. Two, your plan doesn't assume a lot of road capacity. The county assumes only road capacity, and road capacity is more expensive to provide on a per-unit basis, which is some of the reason you see some of the differences. And that may be an opportunity for discussion as well. That difference between the city and county fee may be something that could be offered to offset some of the county's impact. So there are a lot of mechanisms available to negotiate between counties and cities. You just, you really have to have two willing parties to do so. Next slide, please. And so I'll just kind of give an overview, and then I'll turn it over to Amanda. But really, we're also working on an update to the city's comprehensive plan because there are a number of policies in place related to transportation concurrency and roadways that would be removed or amended as part of this. We've already developed a draft ordinance, and we're working on administrative procedures. The first step to put this into effect would be to actually hold a first reading of the ordinance and then hold a second reading. And upon the second reading, for any fee that is lower than the county's, those fees would go into effect immediately upon adoption. There are a couple of fees related to gas stations and banks and fast food drive-throughs that are actually higher than the county's. Those will require a 90-day notice. So you'd have to wait 90 days afterwards for those to go into effect. But if the commission moved forward on the ordinance sometime in, say, December or January, a second reading in February, the fees would actually be effective upon adoption. Some additional options to consider are indexing for inflation so that, and you look at updates in the future, which you do every three to four years, and adopt no later than five years. Those fees would be indexed, and you wouldn't necessarily have big increases during future updates. And Amanda, I'll turn it over to you if you want to have anything to add to that.
And the last point there, number nine, is just the update of this plan. These plans usually live for about five years. So this would be part of the routine of updating this plan with projects that are completed. And once this plan is adopted, it will start to feed our CIP to start funding and collecting funds from the mobility fee to hopefully push some of these projects out quicker. And the idea is that in the next five years, we would be revamping needs, re-studying, and reassessing land to state what our current needs at that time are. Next slide. I think that's it. I think so. So that is all we have. Thank you for your attention. I know that was lengthy. We are available to answer questions.
Before the commission, there is somebody with their hand raised, and I would like to give them the ability to ask a question or make a comment. Mr. Keshid Mahiuddin. We have you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Keshid Mahiuddin, Principal Planner with Palm Beach County Planning Division, located at 2,300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida 33411. I'm representing the county today. The county has submitted written letter basically objecting to any attempt by the city to repeal county's road impact fee, transportation concurrency, and proportionate share. County strongly believes that such an attempt would be illegal as a municipality cannot unilaterally repeal these laws pursuant to county's charter. County wants to be very clear that it is not opposed to city's mobility plan and fee if and only if it is implemented in addition to county's impact fee and traffic performance standard ordinances. With this, I thank you for your, for this opportunity to raise county's objection today. It is very short. Thank you very much.
All right. And I do see someone from the audience that would like to make comments.
Yes, hi. Ernest McNolly, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach. I'd like to say that I just sat and listened or tried to listen to what you can't really hear for quite a long time. I don't understand the process of infusing lawsuits and talking about strategies, making lawsuits in lawsuits. Just lots of problems. You can't hear anyone. And yet it seems like you're wondering where $30 million is. Well, we are too, but you can't hear anything. And you can't ask questions. And how do you allow people to talk for over an hour? And then after that, you say, well, do you have any questions? Well, how are we supposed to remember in the first five minutes you had a question? You know, when they make major statements, where's the public here? Where are 80,000 people from Boynton Beach? I don't get it. I don't understand how you conduct these meetings. So my question is, I don't like how you run this, and I don't like how they present it. And I don't feel it's fair, and I don't feel you should vote. But what choice do we have? You cut everybody out.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
All right. And so now I'll ask the commission if they have any questions or comments. And John, you'll let me know if you see someone with their hand raised.
I will. Currently, we do not have any mayor grant.
Thank you.
If we could just go back to the last slide, the previous slide. So I would like to at least have a rough understanding of the timeline because you have the next steps, but you're not saying a timeline. So what is the timeline on this?
The timeline is not formally established right now. We do have Jonathan procure to be working on items.
Amanda, please do me a favor. Speak into the microphone.
I'm going to move over to this one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. So I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. So currently, so the timeline is not currently finalized. We do have Jonathan working on items one, two, three, four, and five are part of that. Yeah, he's working on essentially everything on this list currently. So the documents will be ready to move forward. The timeline, again, is still up to be determined between the city manager, the city attorney, and the commission.
Right, and so 60, 90, six months, I'm trying to understand.
Prepared. So we can be prepared to move forward with adoption, starting adoption in January or February.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
And most of the work complete by March with the amendments and the other?
Adoption in March, right. The final adoption and approval in March. So we are, we are prepared for that timeline. It has just not been formally set.
Well, if this is the last thing I get to do, then by dog, I'll gladly be willing to support this because, yeah, this is, this is important and valuable. And to really, I would say, kind of go off of the mayor and what I know that he's been passionate about and pushing for the last few years. You know, these numbers are astonishing, but really just understanding that we do have a community that is growing in size. Clearly, by the census that we just saw in the last few months, our community has grown, especially since we've been up here to over 80,000 now. And if you, you know, think about the next five, 10 years, when another census is taken, we might be well in the six figures of residents in the city. So if we're not, if we're only accounting for cars and not accounting for other ways that individuals can move within the city limits, we're basically, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot. You know, so this is more than just, you know, the county has done us an injustice. It's also just how do we plan for the future and how we make sure that we accommodate for the growth that we cannot stifle. It will happen regardless of whether we want it to or not. We are a growing community. We're a growing state. These numbers are going to continue to rise. So what we do now is what will affect our residents 20 years from now. So, you know, I strongly support this move and this direction. I understand the county's hesitancy. Of course, you know, it hurts to have to give back $30 million or whatever future impacts they would be getting. Of course, right? That affects their bottom line. But how do they explain our bottom line and our residents and the disservice that we've done to them and the developers that have built and improved our city and contributed these millions of dollars to their coffers and the lack of properly expended funds within our city limits for the money that we've expended? So it's frustrating, to say the least, but I do strongly believe that this is the right direction, and I will be wholeheartedly supporting moving forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
And we have someone else. Would you like to state your name and address for the record?
Ramona Young, 101 South Federal Highway, Boynton. My question may not have anything to do with what you're discussing now, but about three or four years ago, I attended several meetings on the road improvement between I-95 and Boynton Beach Boulevard to Federal Highway. And when they did Federal Highway, I thought they would go up Boynton Beach Boulevard. That didn't happen. And I'm wondering if anybody knows anything about where that plan is.
So that's part of the county's transport. That's the part of Palm Beach County's Transportation Improvement Plan that is using federal funding. And so those are FDOT roads or state roads.
Yes.
And so that's kind of where it is. It is in the current Transportation Improvement Plan for the next five years to redo east of the interchange to make it a complete street with nine-foot sidewalks on the north and 15-foot sidewalks on the west, on the south, and also add buffered bike lanes and wider sidewalks west of the interchange. However, I, along with the rest of the Transportation Planning Agency, took out the interchange of I-95 as part of that Transportation Improvement Plan because I am not comfortable with the way the state does bike lanes on the roads. So if anyone has been on the Boynton Beach Boulevard near the Turnpike, they have the buffered bike lane on the south side of the road, then on the north side of the road, then on the south side of the road, and then again on the north side of the road. It is a not safe, in my determination, and the rest of the Transportation Planning Agency, it wasn't safe. And so we, as your representative to the county's Metropolitan Planning Organization, we are working to make sure that, we are working with the FDOT to make sure our roads are safer. And in addition, we are also working to make sure that landscape that the state is required to put stays in the city of Boynton Beach. So to answer your question, the impact fees do not necessarily affect state roads because it is part of the county's. And so Lyons Road, Jog Road, Military, Hagan Ranch, those are, those are all county roads that are within the impact fee.
Mayor, was it 2324 that the DOT, the Boynton Beach Boulevard was going to get? The interchange was pushed out too, and Boynton Beach Boulevard, the CRA's project grant?
I believe everything got pushed back a year because it was originally 2223, so it would be 2324. Yes.
Yeah, just a general question for Amanda and Jonathan. As I understand it, when the impact fees are collected, they are designated for certain benefit zones. And I'm just curious, is, do we have impact fee credit? And do we, you know, like if there's a building being expanded or can we get those funds that were designated for that particular benefit zone? And who sets those rules? If you could help me out there.
If I understood your question correctly, when the county collects those fees, they by right can spend their money according to their rules anywhere within the benefit zone. Their benefit zone boundary comes from the east side incorporating all of Boynton Beach and goes all the way out to 441. So there's not necessarily a credit system because in their process, they are spending it within their designated zone.
So it's really almost all of Boynton?
Yes, so Boynton is actually split between, all of Boynton is split between. Yeah, so it's not all of it. Boynton is actually split between Zone 4, and a part of it is in Zone 5. And both of those benefit zones include Boynton Beach and huge parts of what is the county.
So, I mean, we're 16 square miles. The county's, I guess, is well over 100?
If I had to eyeball it, do you know that answer? How much?
That's pretty close. I mean, I just know from the numbers, we haven't done that yet for the zone. But the Gardens was 24 square miles, and their zone was 124 square miles. So it was roughly, or actually 150 square miles. So the zone was six times as large as the Palm Beach Gardens. So there's a pretty good chance. Boynton's a little bit bigger in certain areas than the Gardens, but it's anywhere to four to five, four to five times as large as the city.
We're 16, and they're 25. I would say it's six, seven times.
So has impact fee credit ever been used for Palm Beach County or any municipalities? Or there's no such animal?
The way I understand it, impact fee credits, it's for the developer to petition that his improvements are credited towards. his improvements are credited towards his impact fees. It is not a municipal tool, the way I understand it. Some of the conversation that happened earlier was around the Town Square project because Town Square was responsible for, the way I understand it, paying some of those impact fees for our construction.
Correct.
So I guess I'm very much looking forward into moving this forward. And Commissioner Romulus just stepped out for a little bit, but I do kind of want to get her vote as part of this because it is a resolution we do need.
May I make one more comment?
Yes.
So something that we haven't talked about that I think is relevant, we've talked about the next steps, but we really didn't talk too much about the process that this plan has been through. We mentioned earlier that the initial comprehensive plan amendment was done about two years ago, and that was a public process. And the county did see that process when it came through. We started on this product, the mobility plan and the technical report, I would estimate about a year ago. Staff has been working on that product. Through that process, we've held two meetings, one public meeting held in the chambers that was also virtual. And we've also held a transportation partners' meeting, which included all of our transportation partners. Palm Tran was present, the, our neighboring cities, Delray, West Palm Beach, were all present, and all of the partners were invited, and it was part of our vetting process through this plan. This brings us to this product today, the adoption of this resolution, and then moving forward, the implementation steps for the mobility fee.
And so, Mayor. Yes. Since we're waiting, I wanted to ask a question. Amanda, Jonathan, are we hearing anything from the business community from the chambers? Has anyone taken a position on this?
I know, I believe the Economic Council of Palm Beach County supports the gardens. They have on two occasions supported.
From previous examples, including Palm Beach Gardens, the, the BDB, the chambers wrote letters of support for the mobility fee implementation for Palm Beach Gardens. The, I almost called it NPO, the TPA has also written a letter of support for some of these initiatives. We will be asking for letters of support, and we did discuss this with our economic development manager, David Scott, and he is helping us push the word out there.
We wanted to wait till tonight to see how the commission felt, and then we do plan to move forward and perhaps ask Troy if we can present to the board of the chamber as well as our Government Affairs Committee as additional steps of getting the word out and support.
Yes, Commissioner Katz. I just want to thank you both. We collectively asked 100 questions, and you answered every question, whether we liked the answer or not is irrelevant, but you, you both provided an abundance of information to better inform us.
Thank you. We've been waiting for this day for a whole year, so we are happy to be in front of you today.
Okay. So, you know, we can get, Crystal, we can get Commissioner Romulus's vote before the end of the meeting, correct?
She needs to be here to vote.
Correct. She just took a little break.
Okay.
But you corrected. If we do end before she votes, then her vote won't.
We'll have to come back to her.
Correct. So I will take a motion. Saying no further discussion. Let me double-check online.
Mayor Grant, I also checked there are no questions or comments posted or hands raised.
It was in the sense that we'll wait the meeting, but we can move on to the next item. Saying no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose, hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item is, this is an update of the status of the city's participation in the opioid litigation settlement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a housekeeping item because the city commission voted in, I think it was July, to participate in the, with the state and other municipalities in the settlement of the opioid litigations depending on a national basis. To, one of the steps to complete the process is to register the city to participate in that process. We did that really actually last week, this, when I say housekeeping, the mayor, I gave the information to the mayor, he signed in on behalf of the city, and there'll be additional updates coming now that the city has signed into the system. We should get that information within, let's hope, if not by the next city commission meeting, certainly the city commission meeting in December. And then we could discuss in more detail where the settlement goes on a statewide basis and a national basis from that particular point. There's roughly $26 billion at stake here on a national basis. Those funds will be divided amongst the states that participate. They have not all, I don't think they've all voted yet to participate. Florida has, of course. And then, once we know the number of municipalities and subdivisions that agree to participate, then the breakdown of who will get what will occur, but we're not there yet.
All right. And so we did not file a lawsuit against, and so we are just part of the class action?
Well, all of the, really all, the class action is really where the money is, is being provided through the settlement. We did not file independent action in any proceeding or join in any ongoing national case as well, and we didn't participate in the bankruptcy of Purdue. And as you may have read in the newspaper, it's probably a good thing we didn't participate because there's very little funds available, and those will go directly to people that were harmed.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Romulus, we did have a motion, a second for Resolution 21-150 to accept the mobility plan. Can I get your vote?
Absolutely, yes, resoundingly.
So we have a unanimous vote for that resolution. Now we'll move on to future agenda items. The two kind of conflicting, but the first is, I got a letter for Palm Beach County Days that I'd like to put on the next agenda to get the commission to approve travel. I do think there might be a limited number of people that are joining. And so Lori, is it okay if we, or Crystal, reserve our spots and then ratify it?
Please send me what you have because I haven't received anything, and Richard said they hadn't decided yet on Palm Beach County Day, so if you have something.
Yeah, it's there, it's on their website, and so I'll send the link because it's online. So.
You want to tell me who thinks they may want to go?
Oh, Commissioner Romulus, Commissioner Katz.
Okay, so we'll do five registrations? And then, okay, certainly I'll look at it.
And then the conflicting aspect of it is, is that according to Florida statute 163.31 8019, 801 subsection 9, basic says, "In any action challenging an impact fee or the government's failure to provide required dollar-for-dollar credits for the payment of impact fees as provided, the government has the burden of proving by preponderance of the evidence, which is more than 51% that the imposition or amount of the fee or credit meets the requirements of the state legal precedent in this section. The court may not use a differential standard for the benefit of the government." So this is something that we, as a developer, within the past few years, I believe has the ability to challenge the nexus where we don't necessarily even have to worry about the county suing us for an injunction because they have to prove that they are allowed to collect an impact fee for the widening of our roads where it will be difficult for them to have that rational nexus based upon the numbers that we got of the amount of money collected and the amount of money spent. You know, the question for this commission is, is that I'd like to put it on future agenda to hopefully here soon and to get an estimated cost for the filing of the lawsuit, realizing that this is more of a declaratory action that the county is not able to get, I believe the county is not able to get attorney's fees if they prevail.
Well, I put it on the next agenda for you to do.
I just want the consensus to get an update to see about moving forward. I got a thumbs up, a couple head nods, so we'll put it on future agenda to discuss later.
A future agenda to be determined in?
So it's kind of like we're not approving the lawsuit, we want more information, so whether it's next meeting or in December, to bring back that information. And the other future agenda item was the hybrid meeting. I'm in favor of the hybrid meeting. I think it works very well, the fact that we have a lot of our city employees to be able to attend virtually, the residents able to attend virtually, I think it is beneficial, but we'll have that discussion. Okay, seeing no further else, John, you want to private, provide us with the closing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Grant. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the City of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the City of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and the city staff, we thank you all for attending today's City of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and enjoy the rest of your evening.